Good morning. Welcome to the February 2020 Public Dinner with the New York City Fan March Preservation District of Color. Chair Carroll?
Here.
Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Barry?
Here.
Commissioner Jacob?
Here.
Commissioner Jeff?
Here.
Commissioner Devin?
Here.
Commissioner Ogleman?
Commissioner Russellson?
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Here.
Commissioner Lafferty?
Commissioner Holbrook?
Here.
Good morning, commissioners. I would like to start today's preservation part of public hearing agenda with my number one. Obviously, twenty dash zero five zero five four. Application for a certificate of appropriateness of a Brooklyn block two ninety-two lot forty-four, one eighty-seven Ganning Street in Hubble Hill Historic District. Applicant for buying of a stairwell hospital in eighteen forty-seven. Application is all facade and reconstruct the rear yard addition.
Good morning, commissioners. Brian Blazek, Preservation Staff, will be presenting the proposal. The subject property is located on the north side of Amity Street between the Fourth and Clinton Streets within the Hubble Hill Historic District. The proposal before you today is to construct a rear yard addition, remove metal lintel caps, and install windows. Starting at the primary facade, the proposed work includes removing metal lintel caps to expose the underlying brownstone windows. Photographic evidence shows that while the metal lintel caps were installed prior to the nineteen forty tax photograph, seen on far left here. The neighboring twin building at one eighty-nine Amity Street has retained the historic lintel configuration and does to today. You can see that just a little bit right here as well as the tax photograph here. Probes at the parlor level show the historic condition underneath one of the metal caps right here. A proposed elevation shows the metal caps removed, brownstone windows restored, and the proposed rid of the configuration, which is a four over six simulated double hung at the parlor and two over two at the basement, second and third floors. And now going back to the rear proposed addition, and this is the existing and proposed exxonometre drawings that show the proposed rear yard addition and the immediate context of the block. While the addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfares, the proposal requires commission review because a majority of buildings in the block do not feature rear yard additions as illustrated in the block. And this also kind of shows the views from the city and how it will not be visible at any point in public thoroughfare. These slides show photographs of the existing context and as well as the existing condition of the rear facade. And in elevation, this proposal is for at the basement, there'll be French door assemblies that are going to open onto the rear yard. And at the parlor, there will also be French door assemblies which will open onto a steel deck with stairs down to the rear yard. And at the second floor, there will be a deck and one window still will be lowered to provide access to the roof deck. The addition will be clad in brick or piers on either side. And the proposed section shows that this is going to be a nine foot six inch projection into the rear yard as well as the deck. The applicant is available to discuss this proposal and answer any questions you might have.
Is there anything you'd like to add? Are there any questions for the applicant? We will take testimony and state your name. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? Well, we do have a letter from the Hubble Hill Association recommending approval of the application and a letter from Brooklyn Community Board Six noting that the community board voted to approve the application. All right. Do you have any final questions?
Is this the block or even the house where Winston Churchill's mother was born? Do you know this?
Yes, it is. It's a few houses.
The house or the block?
Mary Phil Martin. It is the block but not the house. I believe the house that Winston Churchill's mother was born in is.
Is this?
This is.
Is this?
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 That the simple design and height of the place and area will consist with other fences involved found in the street street plan and similar housing within the historic district. That the proposed white peavers can operate in that way to use as area water instead and be consistent with other landscape components found in the street plan and will not call on due attention except and that the work will not be finished especially by the technical and historical caliber by the latest latest product by this part of the segment.
On favor?
I have to see a please. Thank you for being here.
You too, I am number three, Dr. C. Tring, National Six Seventy Six Four. An application for a binding report that are over Manhattan. Broad and Wall Street is the street plan of New Amsterdam and Colonial New York individual landmark. How are the streets, the living, the above areas, will have this in the Dutchway presence of Manhattan? The application is to install seating and planter platforms along Broad and Wall Street.
Good morning, Commissioners, Senior Task Manager, Preservation Staff. The application before you is to install new seating and planter platforms at two locations along Broad Street and one along Wall Street, which are all within the street plan of New Amsterdam and Colonial New York individual landmark. Commissioners will note that per the designation report, the regulatory intent of this landmark concerns the configuration of the streets rather than materials paving or grading. So as such, the retention and once perception of the historic street beds are as they relate to the place's concurations are what is currently being presented for your review. The application here is to present the details of the case.
Thank you. I'm going to go through this as quickly as possible. Can you guys hear me from here? Right. So, name before you say it. Oh, Claire Wise from WXY and here with the Alliance for Downtown New York, who really shepherded this larger stakeholder process to come up with a more welcoming wall in Broad Street, essentially what is the closed Wall Street District today. That also happens to be almost exactly the grid, the landmark grid that is. But there were some differences in our border, but one of the key recommendations that came out of that framework plan was to design new seating to add, that also could increase the amount of green for the space. And I'll explain a little bit why that was. But it was a part of a sort of three-part understanding from everyone. This was really a very crowded shared space, a lot of tourists, but a lot of new workers coming down to Wall Street, including architecture firms and residents. So in a way, that grid, this landmark, was taking on a huge amount of new uses and new demands. And of course, it came out of the problems with maintenance that the district is currently having. So I want to point out that what we did then is worked with the Alliance to find out what funding there was available, you know, before accounting the project in order to do something that would indicate the intent of the plan. So there is funding this year for location one, which I'm going to show you, but it was really important both the landmarks and to all the committees and community board that this be seen as part of a system. So we took the time over the last couple of months to develop a system approach and therefore we're showing you these three locations, which the Alliance expects over the next year or so to get funding for all three of these locations. So this really does come out of a looking at and trying to understand the grid and therefore we got to kind of looking at the curves. And in this, I think nineteen fifteen picture, which I'll show you in a minute, actually the expression of the step curve is very prominent here. And, oh, sorry, that's a, but you know, in nineteen hundred, just fifteen years before, the stock exchange wasn't even there and the building on the corner you see wasn't there. And in a sense, you start to see that there's a lot of traces that are left. Pretty well, the condition isn't exactly as it is today, but one can kind of understand it in these terms. So today, what you have is the post nine eleven street scape plan by, at the time Rogers Marvel. You have the furniture there. You really, you have a number of elements that do show, like in the street where the curves was and another element showing what was the canal on Broad Street, or an indication of it. And so looking at, looking at Wall Street and Broad, you can kind of see those conditions and what you have, I'm going to go quickly through this, at Exchange also is even though this is an area where no cars drive through, you have to go through security, there's still a huge amount of vehicles that still pass through to access the area. So you have that on top of everything else. So I'm going to go through the concept. And again, this was a plan that we projected for the whole area and kind of the design, kind of explanation or the design language for the benches really was derived out of that. And it had a lot to do with not making the furnishing out of street scape elements too deterministic, in a way, creating a framework for activity, making sure that it was flexible enough to add different uses and that it would work with and without the curb because in many cases you want people to back off the curb. In a lot of cases, things are so tight that that advantage of going towards where the old curb was, not where the curb is now, and actually it's stepping and becoming the curb, really helps with the congestion coming out of the subways or outside it. And also there is the normal maintenance issues of, that, you know, any district paths with garbage, with skateboarding, and to at least not create something that would encourage occupation for a long time, but really help people having lunch or, you know, someone taking a break or using their phones and overall being low maintenance. So therefore, we kind of tracked in particular location one, what the congestion was right at the subway, and that is really has a lot to do with everyone staring at the stock exchange and being around the fearless girl. So one of the, in this location, we really ended up going through a number of designs, but in a way, giving the space for people to stand in the axis, axes to the stock exchange and not fill that with a bench, so it got broken into two pieces. We taped it and did some one-to-one mockups out there and ended up with an idea that was what we call a seating platform versus a bench. I mean, the commission started as a bench and we ended up creating these rather discreet, I would say curb, curb-like extensions that could still accommodate planters. And they all really are, you know, eighteen-inch deep height with their steps and that they work in a couple of different ways. They're also based on being able to be taken apart. I think one of the reasons we're here is that these are, look more permanent, but actually in many cases, when it's no removal and other things, the maintenance crews do, can pick them up and move them. And we also kind of looked at the non-sharp vocabulary, I would call it, really an ease, edge, rounded, really looking at some of the curb, the bases of buildings there. So the scope, you can see it's taped down. These are the locations. One right across the stock exchange, another one in the corner of Wall that really kind of deals with a lot of the fact that this would help the congestion and give people a viewing point of Federal Hall. And then finally, more, I would call it normative regular street location, which is below Exchange on Broad Street. So this is in location one, an axo view of how it accommodated what will be a seasonal planting program. You get a simple step and then an edge. This is it in perspective. Again, we had looked at the reverse, really like emphasizing the fearless girl and decided in the end that it really made sense to have that free of benches. And kind of view, sorry about the photo montages, about kind of view looking down and now view looking up. And again, this one steps over the curb, that's the river piece, but it really does still emphasize its location. I'm going to, then I'm going to that location number two, which is kind of offset, but right now, actually, you'll recognize this, anyone down there, as where a lot of vendors occupy the space. And the opportunity here is because the subway's right there, is that if we could put seating there, it makes it less congested and gives people a place. That really echoes a lot of the steps right outside the subway and this is kind of, both in coloration you'll see and in what it is, these are reasonably discreet, they're kind of tests for what will be a larger plan, including paving. And they occupy, actually visually, not something that's super dominant, you know, but at the same time, hopefully reinforces the idea of a curb. And then finally, the last location, again, in this case, it is stacked off the curb, there's a bit more room here, there's a lot of room there actually, and therefore creates three pieces of much simpler, in a way, gives you from backless to no back and hopefully supports kind of the planting. And this, you can look at it here by having sort of a curb-stone idea. Again, there's a lot more room on the sidewalk. These shows, these pieces. The materiality, we're looking at GFRC and then based on it, I think, a pretty successful bench that we designed for Albee Square, which has been up there for ten years and still is pretty undamaged and looks to most people like it doesn't get dirty, it's pretty, and they've never maintained it. So we're kind of looking at kind of the coloration of a kind of granite. And, you know, depending on the metal coating, it might get close to the bronze as we have darkened bronze, which is up there today, but less of a, kind of, less of a statement, I think, it would be just more like a matte. And so that's, I think that's really the overall. Thank you.
So there are no changes to where the curbs are located, they're just, we're putting things on top of things that already exist.
Exactly.
They're not changing configuration, not moving a curb out into the street or anything like that?
No. And I want to say that, you know, we had a lot of discussions about snow removal in the district and if there was a giant sensor, okay, because that, and that these could be moved. And in fact, the benches that are there now, you know, are like this, but they used to be like this. So these precast benches are ones who will do get moved, so they're not totally immobile. They won't be anchored, they're going to be happy enough. They will, they'll be scribed to their location, so they will sit, but if they need to be moved, they will move them.
Just clarifying, you may say, why isn't it that the existing benches are being replaced? They're not large enough?
No, I think that, first of all, they're in terrible shape. They really fall apart. And they're not, in a way, they could be remade as is, but in a lot of ways, they're not serving the larger groups of people who tend to congregate in these areas. Like, they're reasonably small and they fit like one or two people at the most. And so what you end up having is, you know, benches for bare-hue and then the, and then the Alliance brings out large amounts of tables and chairs, but then everything ends up being in those locations, especially when people, tourists are congregating to look at Federal Hall or the stock exchange, you get a lot of cluttering in the end and you get a lot of, and you have no, no chance for essentially framing an area with those particular benches. And I think those benches were the ones that originally were out in the street. So they were rotating and they were out in the street and then ended up being a fire depart, to have them that far out, ended up being a fire department, stock exchange operations problem. So they got, the original benches got basically put into a on-the-curb configuration.
And if I can add to that as well?
Yeah, here.
Just state your name. Ari, I'm from Key at the Downtown Alliance. And as Claire mentioned earlier, I think that another reason for the impetus to replace these benches is really this larger vision plan that we started working on in twenty seventeen with this committee and the vision to sort of change and improve the existing conditions in the stock exchange district as a sort of a realization that the industrial environment could function better, that the identity of the district could be stronger and more committed to its history and sort of a third piece of that, as Claire mentioned, rationalizing deliveries. This is really the first piece that the Alliance has funding to implement and to move forward towards completing this larger vision eventually with cooperation and organization fronts, the agencies who were involved in the visioning aspect as well. So I think that really is why we want to take this moment to change the existing bench structure into this different vision, this different concept for seating and planting.
So actually, I could explain that for, right now, the Alliance just uses planters, right? And that these benches, in a way, are reasonably small, but, so the idea of when they put out the RFP was, could we combine these into a system? So we're not buying planters that are just sitting out there and cluttering the district. So these deck benches, I call it these decks, are trying to be a solution for consolidating and having less stuff around. So the idea is to, as a whole, to try and simplify it into not a thing, when districts do this all over, and you guys know this, they buy a bunch of planters, they stick a bunch of planting in, is to try and create a consolidated system, especially in this district where you want to see the buildings, you want to see the street scape, it's already crowded, to have less clutter.
This is a good slide to start with. I had no idea, been walking up downtown the street for years or something, had no idea what that centerpiece was all about until I'm sitting around this table a few years ago, it was something that came to our attention, I think it was phone, or something. In any event, that centerpiece that, like, is the evocation of the canal that was once there. And I think this is a good slide to show how compromised it usually is on a typical day, that idea. And to me, that one thing is worth the entire idea of landmarking this district and the pattern of the streets in this district, to understand that there's a canal there in the Dutchway. So my, so that's just a commentary context to whatever, and I'm going to ask if you could go to one of the latest slides. I just want to be sure that the, that you're not crowding that very area. I think it was one of the next to the last slides.
Yeah, you can see it, you can see, this is the start of that.
Yeah, that's what's there.
So, and in the overall concept plan, we make a big deal out of this because it right now stops and we actually carry it through. In the, again, this concept plan that we've done, that there's a, we actually carry it through, so it keeps going down Broad Street, which it doesn't do right now. And there, I think it is, you know, again, it's suffered from maintenance, the whole thing. But this, it changes color, if there were cars or this fence there, and again, the plan also addresses the location of this fence. But the, that larger plan will take a lot of, I think, not only resources but coordination, but the plan was a hopeful first step because it involved every agency in the city, it involved the Landmarks Committee, you have the Community Board. So I feel like what you just said, it was reinforced by the Landmarks Committee themselves, which is that the principles were there, but the quality of materials and the relationship to the stock exchange is not ideal.
May I just go forward again a few more?
Yeah.
This is rendering. Look to me as if it's there, are we crowding?
Well, this is different, you're down Broad, and again, that, it's true that the, this is the, actually, it's on the sidewalk. So, so that, it's doing a different function there, maybe over the old girl, but you can see these are actually on the sidewalk, so they're not even in the street.
So on the edge of the canal, right?
If anything, you could sit on this bench and you might even notice.
It's just feet, you know?
Like, if you looked up from your phone, you might, I, because part of this was getting people to look both ways. Right now, and which I think the original bench design was trying to do also, but they're, they're not generous enough to get people comfortable to actually sit on the end, sit this way, that way. So I think having a more deck-like thing will create, they will scale better.
And pushing those back a little bit, I'd like to see that.
I think you can push them back a little bit, because in this location, we have the room, so absolutely. I think there was a lot of, you know, in general, concern by building owners, so there's, we're also balancing building owners and...
Just fixate on that canal.
Yeah, I mean, I think you, and you can see there's an evocation, which I think, again, could be stronger and is good where it's deep, but this, you know, right now, is about eighteen inches back, it's eighteen inches back, so it could be three feet back, but it would, will give you advantage from now to actually see it. Is there a plan?
Yeah, is there also a plan really to get the cars out of the...
Well, I think that's, the larger plan looks at traffic management, loading and loading. It also looks at that there's a bunch of new construction projects and new building owners that are interested in that. So it really takes the village to make that stuff move. But yeah, I think the plan actually, everyone cooperated and agreed to doing that, which was really inspiring. There's a number of studies the Alliance included in traffic that is now in the world doing to support basically the funding.
I see one of your objectives is to have less skating. For practical matter, are you concerned about this flat linear edges that tend to be exploited by skateboarders?
So, two things. One, this is all kind of Euro cobble and edges and there's a certain amount of supervision, so actually, there's not a lot of skating that happens here, it's happening in the plazas around here. But the segmented nature of this means that you can put in divot every piece of it and basically obstruct skateboarders. I would also say that rounded corners are also less appealing to skateboarders and so, and that's the, the thing about that curb is it will make, it'll make it harder to actually take an approach of this skateboard. But this, you know, but in the future, when this is all cleaned up and when there's, you know, both rough and smooth cobble, it may be more appealing, but who knows?
This is in not necessarily a landmark concern because the fearless girl happened after, in other words, we're not protecting it. However, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on curb. It seems as though that sculpture is as interesting as it is because she's stepped out onto the street and is standing there kind of in the street, you know, as a frontiers person, out in two, three, and alone and here. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are about the kind of crowding that, I mean, both the street, but also that experience of that sculpture and whether or not, again, as Fred asked about previous, if these platforms might be better kind of pushed back onto the sidewalk if they can handle it.
Well, this one is partially on the sidewalk.
Partially, but I'm asking, yeah.
And I think that part of the emphasis on this and the problem is the stock exchange fence, which hopefully is farther out than it should be and because of all sorts of reasons. But we did kind of tape it and looked at it with tape on the ground and with cardboard and did a one-to-one mockup. And there was plenty of room for people to be around it. I mean, how many, how many people?
Fifteen feet.
And so fifteen on both sides, so you have a thirty-foot ring, you know, circle around it, thirty feet, that's basically what most narrow streets are in Manhattan. So you have an entire, essentially, it's standing in the middle of what would be, you know, Stone Street, right, before you have a bench starting. And it could be the, you know, photo montages, but if you have fifteen feet in either way and around, it felt like a lot of space and we did a lot of observation because part of the earlier study was pedestrian counts and all this other stuff. We did a lot of observation and in the end, over earlier, had a kind of stepped form to allow people more to, then we decided this could be there, it could not be there, it was much easier to just make a space. And then that space, if she wasn't there and instead it was, you know, a group of people doing protests, it would still work fine.
Are there questions? Everybody?
This is the high context, the plaza, the plaza is a high context. And I'm curious about the planning. The proportion of planning is minimal with the high surface. But then you decide to put the planning at all or not make it real?
It, these, all these benches could be with or without planters. We did, so we really wanted to test whether it was possible, you know, they, there are some, people are putting decorative planting out anyways, whether we want them or not because anyone in a space who's in their offices all day feels the need for some relief here. And so we thought the best thing to do is to test it with planting and what it does allow is a little bit of, especially if it gets to be what I would call kind of staggered line, once this is reinforced, it would allow, kind of like Rockefeller Center, which is really not about trees, but it's really about kind of seasonal planting, to, if you've got enough of them in this way, you could have a guest horticulturalist do a springtime thing. You could do, like, I see this more akin to holiday lighting and other things, which is, it allows a season to be celebrated in a particular way, it also allows someone to just get a glimpse of color because most everything is stone. I, that's sort of how we were looking at it. And I think that's the way you were thinking of programming it too, it's not about trees and anything else, it's really about this opportunity to celebrate seasonality.
And I think the, if we want to go back, that's, sorry, just because we have lines to begin. And I think also the relation, the sort of percentage of planters to seating, we also want to ensure that there is sufficient circuitary for people to sit and that that's the primary use of this platform.
And so, plants. Thank you. There we go. So there, all the, on the other hand, though, if there isn't enough planting, there's no way to curate it, it literally looks spotty. I also would say by having seating on both sides of the planting, even if you're just standing there, being supported by the seat, it gives you a bit of respite, it's the more private seating maybe and the ends are the more group seating. So, let's see how human behavior works, but I do think that people seek difference in spaces where they are equating, they also seek change of level. We know that a lot of people just want to stand on this, to be honest, in order to feel like waiting for someone. So there is a thing, again, it's seating, but it's also standing, it's also the main issue.
Other questions?
Yeah, I guess like this may be the use hour. You know, I'm just trying to make sure that we're, we know what it is that we're supposed to be deciding here. I think that the guidance we've given, this is our unusual designation for us, there's going to be a question. And I think we're supposed to, we don't deal with the materials, the paving and the gray paint, right? But we do deal with configuration and presence of the street as a whole. So I just want to be sure that what we're talking about actually is within our responsibility. And I think it, so far, sounds like it is.
Yeah, I think that, so as you said, this is a unusual designation, it's one we like to highlight that's unusual because it's not a building or a structure, it's a street grid. And so the buildings themselves, except for individual landmarks, are not under jurisdiction. And in the designation report, it explicitly lays out a statement of regulatory intent, which is that the commission would not be regulating paving or materials, but the width and configuration of the street grid, so that the grid itself is still legible.
You know, I realize I've forgotten something, which is that when each of the benches, literally at the current curb line, there's a sort of line that's striped through the design of the bench. So when it hits or goes over a curb, there's a line marking the curb, essentially. And that is the, that's the thing, whether you like that or hate that, that is directly related to the landmark grid. So there is a line that's scribed, which is the curb, no matter whether it hits on this side or this side. Now, of course, the one that's set back won't be affected by that.
I think that the guidance we've given, this is our unusual designation for us. There's going to be a question. And I think we're supposed to, we don't deal with the materials, the paving and the gray paint, right? But we do deal with configuration and presence of the street as a whole. So I just want to be sure that what we're talking about actually is within our responsibility. And I think it so far sounds like it is.
Yeah, I think that, so as you said, this is an unusual designation. It's one of my likes to highlight that's unusual because it's not a building or a structure, it's the street grid. And so the buildings themselves, except for individual landmarks are not under jurisdiction. And in the designation report, it explicitly lays out a statement of regulatory intent, which is that the commission would not be regulating paving or materials, but the width and configuration of the street grid, so that the grid itself is still legible. You know, I realize I've forgotten something, which is that when each of the benches, literally at the current curb line, has a sort of line that's striped through the design of the bench. So when it hits or goes over a curb, there's a line marking the curb essentially. And that is the, that's the thing, whether you like that or hate that, that is directly related to the landmark grid. So there is a line that scribes which is the curb, no matter whether it hits on this side or this side. Now, of course, the one that's set back won't be affected by that. But where you do strata wood, that line is pretty strong actually. You can see it in it and it really slices through it. So I think, so the commission has reviewed changes to the grid and in fact, where they are on the sidewalk, the commission had approved bumping that out. So we've approved changes to the configuration in projection of other applications. In fact, the location three is a landmark for your project. That's right. So we have approved changes to the configuration and in this case, because these fixtures are not going to be moved every day, I have two little chairs, we're looking at them, but things that we could consider are conversability of them, that they're not permanently changing the curb line, that they are low and discreet and don't obstruct your view of the street grid, that the line is a gesture of the street grid. So those are kinds of things we could be considering as we think about the impact on the protected resource, which is the really low width configuration of the street. So, is there other questions? We'll take testimony and then we'll come back. Chris Belgoth.
Chris Belgoth of the Society for the Architecture of the City. Perhaps it is wrong to report that the stated aim of this endeavor, as reported on page three, the first slide you saw, was create an identity and sense of place, and this has elicited a certain amount of laughter. Who knew there was a need to create an identity for Wall Street, which is perhaps one of the most internationally known and symbolic thoroughfares in the entire world? It's a little reminiscent of the boilerplate normally used to solicit business from less stellar locations. We were surprised, but pleased to find this item on the calendar. It is our understanding that the protected features of the individual landmark are the curb lines defining the ancient street pattern is not built into that. The concomitant protection is, of course, that this creates an obstacle to new buildings indulging the original street beds. In this application, as we understand it, large objects made of G F R C are to be placed over the defining curb lines in a few locations, but they are removable and not connected to electric lines or plumbing, so cause no physical damage. The objection would be that they block views of the protected features of the landmark. Years ago, when an applicant or a large advertisement sign pointed out that the protected features of his landmark buildings were not damaged or even touched by this plaque, which must therefore be approved, Jeremy Jean Norman became annoyed. He said sharply, "It was not enough to cause no damage. People need to be able to see the landmark." If there is a perceived need for additional seating, it could be provided in a less intrusive way and of course, the physical curves must remain. And probably, Wall Street's identity can speak for itself.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll.
From the Artists' Council, I did hear about the state of regulatory intent, but we've reviewed this appropriate standpoint, so I will just come to sign that I did hear everyone today. As this is a binding report and that advisory report calls to the L P C to set the design standard in this historic place. How are these neo-brueless vaults in keeping with the designated street plan? What about these objects reflects anything about the old street plan of New Amsterdam and the one in New York? This is one opportunity for commissioners to publicly comment on this design and it shouldn't be wasted. H T C has questions about the proposed planters platforms, specifically about their maintenance. What measures are proposed to ensure that these spaces do not become filled with trash or dry out and become dust bowls? To this end, H T C finds them unnecessary. Much like Pexlip, this area has long been characterized as an urban paved piazza without trees or plantings. Introducing greenery here is a welcome gesture if there is a plan that ensures that the plants will thrive rather than their failure becoming an aesthetic nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? And we had a resolution from the Community Board of Law recommending approval of the application. Would you like to respond to any of the comments?
Um, I can. I just want to quickly address maintenance. The town guidelines is currently maintaining the benches and natural planting in this area and we continue to do so with the new platforms. And we have an operations group that is up trash and we maintain planters. So that's part of the, this as well.
Okay, more questions? Do you have some emotion to close the hearing?
On the paper.
So, as I stated, of course, this is, this designation was about memorializing the grid of this street. So I think people are concerned on that as we think about these benches, replacing previously commissioned for benches. I think it's a plan to consolidate these fixtures, which is probably actually a good thing for the street grid.
So, I asked about the fearless girl, not because I, we need to discuss and protect that sculpture, but because I thought that if the sculpture itself on some level reinforces the grid, it says, this is the street, this is the sidewalk, she steps out onto the street. So, and I think that the, can you go back to where we were in plan, sorry, a moment ago? That, as it's described, you know, the one that's most, that chose the planters in orange? Oh, yeah, the very last one. As it's described in plan, right there, it seems as though the new planters and the new seating are more on the sidewalk. But when we look at it in any of the Pexon metrics or the other drawings, they seem to be more on the street. And I would say that actually, when they are more on the street, in fact, that is the proposal here, they do blur and obscure that grid that I think we should be protecting and making sure is legible. So I think that I have some problems with the position, not with the idea or the fact that there might be benches and that they might have configuration, but where they are on the street.
And I agree with Commissioner Marion on this real occasion. And particularly, look at page twenty-six. That one, I know it's not the one you were referring to, but, you know, the one that's entirely in the street. I think there's a, we're not concerned about creating that narrow corridor there. So, you know, if we did move it onto a sidewalk further down, we might even be, have a wider corridor. But yeah, I think that's exactly the problem. I, it's a great idea, the look is wonderful, but that's exactly what we're trying to avoid is the, in particular, in that very corner. I think that's kind of somewhat iconic corner.
So, just for the staff, when we approved the previous benches, I think I heard the applicant say they were originally in the street. So did we approve those benches within the street?
It was a staff-level approval. I think because they were in permanent, you know, they could be moved so easily. So I believe that they were first approved at that original location and then at some point they were moved, but it didn't really impact.
In both cases, you need a little forklift. Oh, sorry. All right. And Everard, you have thoughts on this? Okay, Fred?
Yeah. I made my thoughts known about the corolla of the canal interpretation and I think if I can be pushed back a little, and I'm listening, I didn't pick up on the same issue, the steam commissioners across Western and Central table came up with, but I sort of understand it now. But I think that overall writing issue for me is that these are reversible, reversible and primarily, and they represent a design that is, I wouldn't say of the moment, but certainly appealing during this period of our time. And they well, might be as appealing ten, fifteen, twenty years from now when they can be reversed again and changed again. So I'm not going to get too stuck on the form. I guess that's not our purview in any event, just where they're placed. And I think they seem to be able to be moved around as well. Let's see about a few others talk about where they should be, but as long as that one, not crowned my favor.
And I think for me, the reversibility and the fact that they're very low in scale, I think allows one to still create the street grid. Although I think in plan, I do understand that we should be on one side of the line or the other. But I do think in reality, these are going to be the skater's most common.
I tend to agree with Fred and I also think that Fred brought up a good point, which is the old canal and that brush swath, to me, is more important than the removable temporary benches, that I'm sure that there will be other changes.
I tend to agree with Fred on this too. I think one of the better aspects is that they are reversible and it's almost like storefronts. Feelings will change about this kind of stuff. I find that the planters are actually a bit of unnecessary sort of foppery. I mean, you want to celebrate the color and the greenery. When I walk through this area, I celebrate the stone. There are so many different kinds of beautiful stone and robust manipulations of it in this place. I find that greenery is just sort of...
Sounds like that would come about.
Yeah.
I agree that, I agree with you, I think these are, I do create a street furniture and approve the double ceiling. And I think that the study that they skewer the street grid, I think that their attempts to handle it with a heavy wheel could perhaps be enhanced without modifying the position. And I think that Adi and John, to address their concern, one could move them so that they were fully on and off. I think that that would be okay. But I think you could also achieve that effect through texture, color, through the glacial references to the different kinds of stone, level. I think there are ways to convey that demarcation in a piece of street furniture that would both achieve the intended effect of the program and maintain the strength, perhaps, that sense of, that this object is traversing a line that has meaning, you know, that has reference. And the wheel may not be the best way to do it, but I think that could be left to staff, right? They could work for the applicant, provide for you. I really like the way they kind of nestle down and kind of stay low to part of the street and stay, the way they kind of pull down, unlike the benches. The benches really create a great visual, heartlike quality. And I think that these upswellings of masonry feel much more appropriate to this location than benches to try to address the current reality of this place, which is basically a pedestrian tourist mall, in a way that holds a little bit tighter to urban qualities of a, you know, a good place and successful. I like Michael's idea about the stone. I think that if they could do that, I think it would be the best.
Hannah?
Yeah, I agree with the previous speakers. I think it's good to get rid of these separate planters, absolutely, because if the planters really are necessary, it might just provide some seating that, you know, have a certain attractiveness, but perhaps in this case, it's not necessary and it's just creating a more... I think that the further defining the street grid in a variety of ways that then suits us, this is the one that reports, so not exactly. I think if that can, that could be done and should be done to make sure that you have a sense of the street grid without creating further congestion. Because if you have further congestion, you're only going to make it less apparent because no one's going to see it because it's, you know, too many people to, type of space. So I don't want to go fine on moving these things. How much or if the seating should be moved, but try to say, let's try to make sure that the street grid and the canal are really apparent. And if that can be achieved by further defining the line that they use or the, or just some small elements within the positioning of these objects. And maybe if they're not trying to do the planters, that would give them more, more hill seating space. I agree with Fred and Michael, Michael.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Adi on the fact that, especially where the planters or the seating straddles the curb, that it really does sort of lower the distinction of the designated sidewalk and the street. I think having it on the street is, for me, is a concern, that it does diminish the meaning of it. I would love to see it on the sidewalk itself.
Just to follow up on a couple of points. On the reversibility issue, you know, often when we talk about reversibility, we're worried about the damage that it's doing to the landmark, having attached to it, that sort of thing. Here, the only thing that we're regulating is, you know, configuration and presence. And so reversibility becomes irrelevant to me because even if they're not here forever, they're going to be obstructing that configuration and presence for fifteen years, ten years, whatever it is. They may be movable, but they're not going to be moved. So reversibility is irrelevant to me. I do want to also follow up on Michael's, Michael DeBert's point. I agree with him completely. I think the, when it comes to plantings, I mean, I'm all in favor of green, but that's one of the distinctive features that makes the presence of the Wall Street area what it is. If you look at a twenty-inch age place and the very narrow streets surrounding it, you know, the presence is those, is the solidity of the whole thing, the running of the street into the sidewalk, into the building and not having anything interfering. So the green is not something that one would expect. And we do actually make that kind of judgment in other historic districts. We talk about whether that's, you know, the way, whether street trees belong here or street trees do not belong here. And if there is ever a neighborhood where green does not belong, no matter how much benefit, you know, we understand it has, this is that neighborhood, that is part of the presence here, is the stone.
Right.
I just want to say that again, we're not regulating, it's not a district, not regulating the stone. And I just think this is a place where we're regulating with the street, its relationship. And I think that if you want to argue that having greenery in the street bed is awkward, then that's one thing. I think that to talk about it in terms of the...
I think that to talk about it in terms of the relationship to the buildings, I think is, that's not overregulate.
I don't think you can talk about this project if you don't talk about presence. I think that is what our responsibility is to define it. And presence is the image of these streets and buildings all together. If you want to take the buildings out of picture, I don't understand how we can value the presence at all.
But it is true that the street grid predates many of these buildings. And so the designation is recognizing the original street grid in the colonial period. So I think we do have to kind of stick to the guidance of the designation report, which is really about, not, you know, explicitly not about materials and just about the grid. And I think that, from the comments that I've heard, I think that we have, and just quickly come on, but I think we have support from six people if the applicant would push it away from the curb or reprove the bump out next to the canal, location number three, and if they would continue to think about what that demarcation is, color or material or what that, how they can enhance that line, so it's maybe something more meaningful than a reveal. And then I think the greenery, it's not trees, it's planting that's something that's going to change and sometimes not be there. So I think if that's the case...
Sorry, Sarah, you're saying push back the planters from the edges?
The edges on number three.
And not the first one?
Because this, where we've approved this existent significantly large bump out, they have the room to push it back. And I think the problem is on the other side, once they don't have the room to put it on the sidewalk. We can ask them to continue to explore how much they can push it back so that it's more like the axonometric or the, that orange plantery with the orange. We can ask them to continue to explore that.
I do have a question there, I'm sorry. So when you're saying that they don't have room to push it back onto the sidewalk, what are the constraints there? I mean, in this case, the sidewalk is now the street.
It's all pedestrian.
So it's all pedestrian. So what is the, what are the limits? Is the subway, so does that, so the sheen effect would actually...
Right. I think they've also done a lot of analysis about the circulation patterns here, workers versus tourists and how people, so we do it around. And so I think that's something that they can continue to explore. It sounds like otherwise we have to expose for it. So we're not... Diana, raise the motion.
In the matter of finding report, we're in Manhattan, proceed 20-06764, Road and Wall Street, Street Plan in Amsterdam, according on New York individual landmark. A pattern of streets, the only remaining of uprlying physical evidence of the desecrated presence in Manhattan. Application is to install seating and plantar plant platforms along Broadway and Wall Street. I note that according to the street plan in Amsterdam, according on New York designation report, the intent of the designation is to regulate the configuration and presence of these streets rather than to deal with matters of materials, paving and grading. I recommend approval with modification, finding that, finding that these seating and plantar platforms will not be permanently attached to the roadbed or sidewalks and that the work will not under any portion of or otherwise permanently affect the street plan, which is the significant feature of this individual landmark. But the proposed installations, which will span or flood the curb line, will be low scale and therefore their presence will not disrupt the relationship between the road grid and the street curves and sidewalks, retracting the irregularity of the street pattern, which makes the plan of the streets so evocative of its original origins. And recommend that the applicant push, excuse me, I recommend that the applicant, oh, sorry. That the installations are reversible and the street grids could be exposed in a historic with minimal effort in the future. That the materials and finishes of the installation hold the harmonious with adjacent paving and previously approved street furniture. And cumulative effect of these changes will not diminish legibility of the historic street pattern. However, I recommend that the benches at the southern seating area be set back further from the curb and that the design of the installations be refined to maintain the legibility of the street grid and enhance its features, including the curb line and the paving referencing the canal and the street grid.
Call a favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, three opposed. And we'll ask them to continue to explore pushing back the locations one and two as well, to the extent possible.
Okay, we're going to move to item number four now, install EC 20-07110. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in a road in Hattie Block 47310. 478 Broadway, AKA Forty Cosby Street, so as a historic direction. Store buildings, I'm not interested in that, but they can set up three and seven four. Yeah, we should install store buildings. The Maritimes, Marcella Cetto, by the research staff. The site on 478 Broadway, AKA Forty Cosby Street. The area of Fortis at the Crosby Street facade, located at the west side of the street between Bourbon and Grand Streets in Musso, Cast Iron Store. So here are existing conditions for ground floor. The proposal for you today is to install new wood, develop indoor, as well as new store and relocate cast iron buildings. You have to consider your ability to discuss this proposal and answer your questions.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Julie Rosen from Heaton Place Bar and Partners. As Marcella mentioned, Forty Cosby is a twin block building, actually, owns from Broadway to Crosby. At the left of it, you can see the Broadway facade. This is the primary facade, whereas the Crosby Street facade that you see in the middle is the rear, which is historic and service purpose. What's interesting and the point unique about this building, though, is that the rear facade is also a designed facade and it has decorative cast iron elements that match those on Broadway. At the ground floor, you can see the blow up on the right. The decorative cast iron structure and panel metal shutters remain intact, but the other infill has been altered over time. And our proposal is to convert the service entrance into the office tenant entrance and lobby. Here's a close up of the existing conditions at the ground floor on Crosby Street. The metal shutters at the left bay lead to a shaftway. This will remain in its current location. The shutters in the middle bay are fixed shut, currently backed by the interior partition wall. We'll see what the plan is for that later in the presentation. And the right bay is the current entrance. The entry door and windows are not restored, even though some changed over time, but the metal shutters are restored. Those will be retained in place and repaired. And there's one deteriorating transtom bar above the entry bay that will also be replicated with new wood in them. Just a couple of detailings of the existing conditions, where you can get a sense of the historic metal shutters and the historic transtom bar, a little better. And a few more existing conditions photos, really just focusing in on the significant metal deterioration that we have here and the layers of paint that have been built up on the cast iron elements. All of the metalwork will be stripped, repaired, and if we see the underpainted. A couple of historic photos. Unfortunately, the focus of Crosby Street were quite limited, so they weren't really helpful in helping us determine what the historic infill might have been. So we turned to the district for inspiration. We looked at both historic and commission approved storefronts throughout the district, really drawing on typical configurations and proportions for the new infill at Forty Crosby. The team also found a couple of very interesting commission approved precedents on Mercer Street. This one in particular is at 118-152 Mercer, where full height shutters were retained in place. Some were fixed open, others remained shut. And all of the restored front infill was actually set back behind the open shutters. And there's a similar approach taken at 26 Mercer Street. And the team found it really interesting that all three bays actually contained historic shutters and created this regular pattern of panel returns. And you'll see the inspiration there, the new design for Forty Cosby. And just quickly from the groundwork, the team first drew inspiration from the divided light transoms at the Broadway facade, which you can see on the right, and then looked at other historic buildings in the district and beyond. And we'll turn it over to the architect.
Hi, everyone. I'm Samir Shur from Moving Finger for TECs. I'm going to dive into some of the architectural elements of this design. As you can see on the rear facade, a lot of the ironwork is handling with our traditional motif for Forty Crosby, and we found that it was beautiful and unique. So when we were looking at it, we felt that the regularized infills were supported by this design, rear facade. We wanted to take this, the historic transom height and retain that height and carry it across to all three bays. At the left bay with the shaftway is currently located, we're taking the historic shutters, fixing them in the closed position and adding recessed metal panels above, which are new, but the profiles will be cast and to match the existing. And the middle bay where we have the existing shutters, we're taking them and fixing them in the open position. This building is a little unique. It's not designed to accommodate these shutters in the open position, so we have to look at our precedents and set back the storefront and create some cabinets that will help out how these shutters. At the entry, we're matching what we're doing in the middle bay, we set it back and create a new recessed metal panels that will match the existing shutters. Just some blow up plans showing what's happening here with the existing shutters at the entry. We're taking the diamond plate that's at the left bay in the shut the shaftway and just replacing it behind and also doing a metal diamond plate at the middle bay, which is fairly typical of the system. Some blow up plans showing blow up of the entry and the middle. The dark gray hash here is the historic cast iron. As you can see, we're not touching any of the historic cast iron. The cabinets that we're designing, how the shutters are all set behind, and the new panels and the entry bay are also set behind existing cast iron. So a view of the current condition and proposed. As you can see, the, where in the middle bay where the cast iron shutters are in fixed open position, there's a reveal around it that expresses historic infill. And I think that also the new recessed panels will look a little different, but will be all repeated, so you can kind of walk through the history and the layers of this building and how, you know, we're respecting the historic fabric but also kind of working within the, what's consistent in the district, like Mercer Street, where the shutters go all the way up and they're sort of equally spaced throughout. At the entry, we're incorporating a security intercom system into one of the new recessed panels. It's going to be centered in the panels at an eight day height and it's not touching any of the historic cast iron, not through the neutral or anything. We're kind of doing that from behind the historic fabric. Some sections, we're showing the clock, we're detailing of this. At the center bay, we have a typical three foot high bulkhead that's been consistent in the district. We have very typical detailing with solid wood storefront system and craning. And so for the decorative grill, for the air intake, we like this idea that's kind of pulling through the Broadway facade, the leaded glass transtom, just kind of add a little decorative grill bit for the air intake and hide the movers that are set behind it. For the color of our lower portion, we're pulling from above the building where the cast iron is painted this off white color, we're going to bring that down to the lower portion to keep all of the cast iron fabric painted consistently and taking the infill color from also above with the dark gray.
Thank you. Yes, Michael.
Can you talk a little bit about the decision about the way you penetrated the transoms? The photos show the homolions, the front of the building has the leaded grid. What's, what's the kind of decisions made to change them in this way?
So we just wanted a lot of light coming into the interior lobby. We basically took the transom height from the historic level and we just made a sort of glass transtom to allow lighting to come in from the building. I think that we also wanted to kind of keep this very regularized and look similar to what the Broadway looks like as well, with the transom height and the glass above.
I guess I'm asking about the choice not to replicate or retain the homolions or personally bring the grid from the front to that, but to use a single sheet glass for the transom height.
I guess the historic photos, and we didn't find anything that supported kind of bringing in the construction from the Broadway facade to the back.
The photo showed this cover, right? Were there shots of it with a rear shot?
I might jump in quickly as well. So we're also understanding that there were alterations made over the years of the Broadway facade, and actually those leaded glass transoms are a later addition. They weren't so dual in some buildings. We're also trying to find a happy medium of differentiating between the primary facade and the service entrance, and going with the simplified transtom expression on the Crosby Street facade we thought was appropriate.
I'm just curious as to why, on page seventeen, the door and the storefront are not in the same plane of mind, why you made that decision to offset them?
I think that when we were detailing out where the door and the transom fit, we needed a substantial bulkhead to put the windows set at the bottom of the storefront. And for the doorway, we're challenged to have the door swing open and the door pulls were hitting the front of the cast iron front of the building. So we kind of were limited within those constraints and... So we couldn't push that any further. And so also, we're also kind of maintaining that historic cast iron facade front, so we can't, we can't bring the storefront out any closer to the front of the building. So we're just going to push and pull and try and get it as close to the line as possible.
Other questions? So anyone who'd like to speak on this application? All right, and we have a resolution from the Manhattan Community Board to recommending approval of the application. All right, if there are no questions, we'll move to motion opposed in hearing.
Okay.
Call a favor? Okay, so discussion. So removing the nonhistoric infill, retaining historic shutters, replicating the deteriorated transom bar, otherwise inserting infill in, which is very actually typical of the old leaveover of the older transoms and on its own, it's sort of in the spirit of the rules for the storefront alteration. The difference here is that it's set back so that the shutters can be preserved in place and these shutters are being replicated to accommodate those. And the question of the transoms, we certainly approved the number surplus on the sort of Crosby, which is back facades with a half similar to the transoms at least sort of traditional proportion. But they are all streets that were the service size of buildings and did have more multi-light in their configuration historically. So, you know, I think one could go either way. But let's go around and have a discussion about this. Have you started? I think it's fine. Okay. All right, great. I think it's nice that it's keeping the historic fabric, that you're designed around and highlighting that feature. Okay, great.
In the matter of document number LPC 20-07110, 478 Broadway, also known as Forty Crosby Street in the Seville Cast Iron Historic District, the application is to install storefront infill. I note that building style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Seville Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval noting that the proposed work will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features of the building, but the building historically featured a formerly designed rear from Crosby Street facade that is in keeping with the proportions, materials, and details of the primary Broadway facade and that the proposed storefront infill, featuring a wood framed display window, transoms, panel bulkheads, and decorative grills, is consistent with storefronts historically found on buildings within the Historic District. That the infill will be recessed behind the historic cast iron piers and the replicas of the historic cast iron shutters will be installed at the pier returns linking the central and the northernmost bays. That the existing historic cast iron shutters at the... That the existing historic cast iron shutters at the southernmost bay will be restored and fixed in a closed position. And that a panel, cast iron graphic a panel installed above the historic shutters will match its various proportions and details, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the several cast iron historic district.
On the favor, we approve.
Next item is number five, is eight dash zero six three five. Application for certificate of forgiveness to the borough of Manhattan, Block ninety-nine, four plus two five two. Fourteen sixty-six Broadway, the Nickel Park Hotel, the Nickel Park Hotel, Close Our Style Hotel, sign on our, here, in Davis. Six, it's altered by Crossbeak Flat, in the twenty twenty-four, the Roanoke House of House style annexes, I buy those, including the little three and four. We have a breach of this to install.
Good morning, Commissioner. I have a problem with a question stat. The application is to install additional signage at the individual landmark, the Nickel Park Hotel, located on the southeast side of Broadway and in West Forty-Second Street. I'm going to jump ahead here, and then the applicant will drag and rest us to these slides. So please note that the LED screens here at the second floor and the transoms here and here have been approved by the commission with authorization to proceed. It's for instance, a master plan that approved the installation of these LED screens behind these display windows and the transoms. So this application is to install additional signage. The first is an LED projecting block sign in the corner here. Second, internally illuminated letters of the transoms in the corner here, and internally illuminated letters of the blue here. And then the installation of the outside, the interior display window there. The applicant is here to discuss the proposal.
Thank you, Abby. Good morning, Commissioners. Sarah Scher from Davis Square Park. We are the restoration consultants for J.D. Swartz, who is the new tenant that will be occupying majority of the retail space at the base of the Rocker Hotel, which, as Abby said, is an individual landmark located at West Forty-Second Street and Broadway in the Times Square area. So as Abby said, there was a master plan of signage approved in 2014 by the commission that included a few different elements. That includes LED screens at the second floor commercial bay, that is in every bay except for the three that are above the hotel entrance on West Forty-Second Street. Replacing the spandual glass at the transoms on the first floor with LED screens. And then in every commercial bay, these projecting shelves that have dimensional signage on top of them that are externally illuminated. So our proposal today is to essentially reduce a lot of the signage that's approved of the building and then add some different elements. So this includes, instead of having LED signs that go all the way down to the second street, we're just going to have four bays, LED signs, and then this neon sign that Abby had just described. Neon signage at the second floor, according to LTC rules, is limited to eighteen by eighteen inches. But we feel that because this building has a very purposeful commercial base, that's two floors, and the neon signage is quite transparent, you'll be able to see through the store that this is an appropriate addition. Instead of all of the shelves with dimensional signage, we're just proposing three areas of dimensional signage. This is over the entrances on Forty-Second Street and Broadway, and these are internally illuminated dimensional letters that won't project out very far and will just be attached to the LED screen frame itself, so not attaching to any of the store fabric. The other dimensional sign is over an existing window on Broadway. And then the other piece is a square in plan LED sign that's intended to connect the LED content that is happening on West Forty-Second Street and Broadway and just sort of bring it together and bring our corner presence to the building. And this type of sign is similar to what you're seeing here in these boxes, but obviously at much smaller scale. So we are in Times Square. These are not landmarks in Times Square, but this is just intended to be due to a character of Times Square. It's characterized by large signs, illuminated signs, LED signs, with moving images on it. And it's also characterized by corner signage. Every building in the core of Times Square has corner signage except for our building. And this is just to, you know, it's part of the branding, it's part of the excitement of Times Square and the unique use that you're getting as the accent avenue of Broadway across. There are three individual landmarks other than ours that are in Times Square that are not theaters that all have corner signage that has been approved by the commission in the past. This is the Paramount Building that became Forty-third and Forty-fourth Street, which we may know with the Hard Rock Cafe, virtueing the signs at the corners. At the, at both corners of the building, there are two large signs at the base and a little farther up. Those were approved in nineteen eighty-eight. And then there are blade signs that go down on Forty-third Street and Forty-fourth Street that are LED screens with these moving images, and those were approved in twenty seventeen. And then going a little bit farther uptown, the other two individual landmarks, the Iron Miller Building is on the left, and this has large LED screen on the Broadway facade as well as LED screens attached to the structural supports of the left side of the building. And then on the right, the Grill Building, another individual landmark on Fifty-eighth and Broadway, that has LED screens that wrap around the corner. And you see the LEDs sort of all connect to each other along the two sides of the building. This building also has neon signage that was approved behind the blazing as well as internally illuminated letters at the beginning. So just stepping back to our building a bit, the Baker Walker Hotel was completed in nineteen oh-two. It was one of the luxury hotels that was developed by the Astor family in the late nineteenth or the twentieth century. And when it was originally constructed, it was this very elaborate rosart building with a substantial limestone base that was very solid. The hotel closed after fourteen years, and at that time it became an office building with a commercial base. And at that time, most of this robust compliance facade was removed to create these lacy storefront windows to allow for retail presence at the ground floor. And at that time, there really was this distinction between a retail base and then the ornate, the ornate rosart facade above with this heavy corner sign separating the two. And all the signage that we're proposing exists in this retail space that we're calling it. And by the time the building was designated in nineteen eighty-eight, a lot of the ground, the bottom two floors had been heavily modified. And the owners of the building in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen put forward a storefront master plan for the source to bring back this Chinese appearance. So as part of that plan, a new limestone was installed at the base. So all of this ground floor limestone is actually not historic. It was installed in twenty thirteen. So just a reminder, this is the approved master plan with all the LED screens at the second floor as well as in the transom of the first floor, the projecting shelf signage in every bay. And then our proposal again, which has the corner sign, which is attached to, as I mentioned, historic fabric, the twenty thirteen neon limestone. The two dimensional letters over the entrances and on the existing mover. The neon signage that would replace the bay that would have LED signage otherwise. And then this corner sign, which really is meant to bring together these two elevations. It aligns with the bottom of the ground floor transom and the top of the second floor storefront. And would be a characteristic of neighborhood attached to historic fabric. And then here again, it's just calling out these four different elements that are part of the certification of appropriate history. And then details, so the corner sign is eighteen feet tall, and it's a square in plan of three feet and a half inches with five attachment points to allow for the electricity to go through. The dimensional signage, which, like I mentioned, is only attached to the LED screen, not attached to any parts of the actual building itself, will be internally illuminated.
Do you want to add this one?
Okay.
Because the backdrop is, behind the JV is a digital?
Yes.
So that's, so it's like an overlay of the digital and it's?
Yes, yes, which is what it was in the master plan as well, except it's a shelf.
Right, it's not a shelf.
Yeah. And then this is the neon signage, which is about a foot set back in the blazing. Like I said, has this very open field, you'll be able to look up into the store this way. And then the internally illuminated signage in existing mover on Broadway. And then here are elevations, West Forty-Second Street. So LED signs were approved for all of these bays and this. We're just showing it in these four, neon sign, dimensional sign, flag sign. And then approved and proposed again on Broadway. So this will not have an LED sign over the entrance here. And then our dimensional sign here and here, and the corner sign. So just to reiterate, we feel that this is a reduction in the neon signage that will be a building. That corner presence is important for Times Square and appropriate in this particular neighborhood, that all of the signage is within this retail zone that was part of the modification of the building in the teens. And we feel that this is inappropriate for this.
Any questions? I agree.
How big is that corner square?
It's eighteen feet tall.
And how deep?
And the plan is three feet by three and a half inches, and it projects out three feet, ten inches from the building. And it just, it only, it's below the corner sign on the second floor. So meant to align with the LED screens that are approved of the transom on the first floor and the second floor storefront.
It's the only option that sticks out of the facade.
The, I guess, I mean, besides the can pieces that are like, or the marries, yeah.
Other questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? And we have a resolution from community board five recommending denial unless the retail corner LED blade sign is removed and the yellow LED signs are drastically reduced in intensity. All right, so any last questions? And some of motion to postpone hearing?
One second.
On the favor? So I think that was a very helpful presentation. Thank you for explaining clearly how this is different from the original master plan. And I think, you know, that because it's a different context, it looks like it's more signage over for, you know, it's sort of a different sign plan. But in fact, in many ways, as was stated, it's actually reducing the amount of signage that's approved currently approved by the master plan. So the big difference is, I think the neon replacing LED screen is just not a big reduction. But I think there were a few questions related to the corner sign, and which wasn't part of the master plan, but is the application, except that it was approved on other individual landmarks in the area. And then to switch from externally illuminated signs on a shelf in every transom to just two at the corners that are not projecting as far and not projecting very good. So I think that those do seem, while different, they are, and internally illuminated, it's a reduction in the numbers, I think, in the condition of this trade off of the reduction of the number that's previously approved. And also consists of some other approvals that, I think, they don't like. Corner sign?
I can accept the other changes. The corner sign, to me, all I have to do is look it back. Front cover of the existing building. And to me, this runs the entire length of the building. And to interrupt it at the base undermines the whole principle of the building. So I think it's wrong, even though apparently we've approved corner signs of other parts of historic buildings and other parts of it. And I swear, I can't support it there. Just that piece of the interest art of the original building, the limestone corner, needs to remain free of the, you know.
And historically, there was a newsweek sign at the corner at the upper floors. That doesn't serve as a precedent for you.
Not for me. The building serves as a precedent.
I agree with Fred. This building's been abused enough.
It is?
I don't care whether it is. I think that the newsweek signs present. I think that the context of Times Square is one where buildings are in the background and the signs are in the foreground. And this kind of, this building is a, is part of that. So I'm just.
Yeah, and I also am having, thinking about the fact that there was a newsweek sign there, although this is in a lower area. The applicant has talked about the justification for that in terms of how the building's at at the time in retail base. So there's, there's always one of this building, and there's permission approvals for it.
And in a funny way, I think the presentation has made a worst case for the building that could have had, because it really doesn't have a lot of contextual shots shown. The building immediately to the west and north have a couple of signage on it. And that this is kind of a, who knows in that, that suite?
It probably, even with the corner sign. Others, Diana?
No, I'm sorry. Well, I tend to, yeah, Michael's side of this one. I do feel, you know, it is a difficult corner, but at the same time, this is Times Square, and it's just overwhelming, you know, the signage. And other, the applicant said, I assume it's correct, that this is the only building without a corner sign. And one reason we haven't, we're not looking at how we're implementing other corners and making it look less beautiful is because there's already something up there. So I don't feel, I kind of feel like this is like this. Just in this particular district, that is appropriate to have a corner sign. You know, it's very unfortunate to see that, that nice corner, you know, included, but I don't think I can say that we shouldn't permit this sign because it's just a difficult of this district.
Yeah, while this is not a historic district, the context of Times Square has been considered in evaluating signage for all of the other individual parts and area and how signage early on is attached early on. The other thing is, it's like the other ones, and this one would sit free and be proud of the building. So I think if I did my math right, seven inches off the facade, but that can be something that we maybe tweak to.
Yeah, I think it is a point scandal from the corner, and it's not, it is, doesn't impinge on the, the coins line, right, to the commercial bottom of the, the rest of the building. I think I can kind of afford it.
I think I agree with you that the precedent of the newsweek sign means that it's appropriate first.
John?
When you understand the historic district, you have serious individual landmarks around here where we, or predecessors, approved signs that are much more intrusive than this one. I don't think the choice in the presentation, doing it this way with the generic, you know, part of the signage did in any favors, I think they probably would have been better off just putting a name in there. Or, you know, briefly, it would have helped. I do want to lament the loss of the UTP on going. This is a theory.
There's no reason to.
Professionally, it's my own. But I can prove it.
I do with my car, it's, I think it's a flat, a blank surface sign, it's fine. This is three dimensional, it sticks out. And if you look at it, just walking on the side, it would stick out by a bit. It's too long.
No, just I agree with all my distinguished, yeah, probably set across the table.
All except one.
I said all.
Some are disagree that I prefer not to support it, but this is, but we can have enough to vote it as is. Abby?
Yeah, I have my girlfriend, the Anna, and Abby, John, and well.
All right, no, I just want my calls ready. Oh, the order? Yeah. Okay, sorry. Probably skip that one. In the matter of F C two zero, it's zero seven one five, those are the transoms for the, the Rocker Hotel, individual landmark. A rosart style hotel designed by.
A Bozart Style Hotel designed by Marvin Davis, with Bruce Price, built in 1906, and bought by Charles Pratt in 1920-21. It only has to build five of its own annex, designed by Philip C. Brown and built in 1994. The allocation is to install signage. I recommend approval. Find that the installation of the proposed sign will not damage or conceal a significant historic fabric, but the building's location in part of Times Square makes it a candidate for a large amount of eliminated signage. Therefore, the corner sign and the additional, additional neon signage and internally eliminated letters, in conjunction with the approved LED screens at the seventh floor display windows and first floor transoms, will not be excessive or detract from the significant architectural features of this individual landmark. The proposed neon sign will be installed around eight inches behind the glass and will not substantially reduce the transparency of the display window. The proposed internally eliminated letters at the transoms will be well integrated into the design of the transoms and installed in front of previously approved LED screens and a modern mover. However, oh, and that the proposed LED box sign at the corner stands off previously and is limited to the commercial base of the building.
Second.
My favor. Hi. Any approves?
No.
You and Everard. Approve or don't approve.
The next item is number six, F C twenty dash zero seven one seven zero, an application for the intent of a current access to Manhattan Avenue, eighty eighteen lot sixty six, twenty six West Seventeenth Street in the Ladies Mile of the Smart East. Bozart Style Store block building has a O C front and, perhaps, a little more than a set of applications for roll down security gate.
We usually set right there, next to Michael. You guys here? Want to read? No, no, welcome to here. You're not going to say anything, right? Okay.
Good morning, commissioners, which are your preservation staff. Building's located at the north side of West Seventeenth Street, between Fifth and Sixth Avenues. Previously, a certificate of appropriateness was issued in 2010 to replace storefront fill and install light fixtures. The proposal is to install a roll down security gate at the southern recess entranceway and to replace portions of the limestone base of the building with granite. The architect wanted to retain the wire required in the belt and the energy to reach our, to pose for, ask any questions.
Thank you. Michael West End, advised of the dollars. The building is a classic block building, block, Second Thirteenth Street, between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, Manhattan, Manhattan District. The building is largely unaltered in very good condition, architecturally, and since it was built in 1906. Has very robust, restored storefront expression with the monumental cast iron columns. And as you can see in the floor plan, there's a recess in the middle storefront, which is the issue we want to talk about. There are two retail tenants, each of which who have a door through that recess. The storefront recess rendering in the interesting condition. So as Richard just said, the storefronts were replaced in kind years ago, and the doors, the recesses, are still in condition. The recess is really an issue. The owner, who's owned the building for 65 years, has found that this recess, which is about eight feet deep off the street, is becoming a little bit of security hazard at night when the stores are closed, in the center recess, of, 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 block. And so the police people lawyer, in the last couple of years, reports to us that it's another place where people sleep. And now there's many, six or seven people who sleep in this recess at night. And the morning, the, the debris and soil, the surroundings, and it's been, there's problems with the retail tenants arriving in the morning, some, you know, intimidation and, and behavior. The owner's been talking to the police department, but they can't be there every day. So what we wanted to propose was a simple solution, simply to be able to close off this recess at night with a roll down security screen. As you can see in these drawings, the roll down security screen, as you can see, the section on the right cannot be recessed into the floor slot or within, so we need to put this below. And I mean, putting a socket enclosure in the lower ceiling in the recess and two jam enclosures so that we can have this grill. This is a render show of the grill in place. We have a socket enclosure, matches the materials of the storefront base, which is painted wood, the same color, and then some frosted glass panels matching the pattern of the windows, socket, and then a thin jam enclosure which enclose the traps. This is what it would look like during the day. And then when the grill comes down, we have a transparent grill as required by the, the environment. The building is so robustly modeled, and this piece is quite recessed, we, we feel that the impact of this enclosure is quite small, looking at the facade and the monumental restored expression of the storefront itself. And we have a technical detail, we're going to go through a break. Detail, the grill will be supported by a series of new steel tubes which go to the floor ceilings, so there's no attachment to the cast iron columns or removal of any materials. Any questions?
Sure. So the disposition of these new jams will limit the operation of the doors that are adjacent to the jam. Is that okay?
Yeah, let me get my, it will reduce them about five degree, so the two, three foot doors, one can open at 90 degrees, that's required, the others, the other was going to be limited to about 85 degrees.
So could, could you not put the posts in the gate more tucked behind the columns so that it would have less visibility on the, on the front, setting a little bit more?
Yeah, I will show you, so what we're limited by, and you can see the pink rectangle, is the enclosure of security grill above. So we're limited because of the, the diagonal of the door.
Why?
It's just that the box above the new transom, which have been boxed out anyway. But we did, we don't want to create a kind of a boxing out of the interior of the building as well. And we really only gain maybe two or three inches if we did that.
Yes, and the photograph from 1915 seems to indicate that the chamfer, the diagonal, the diagonal doors were historic, is that the case? And did I miss that part? That it was always this way?
The recess, the recess was always there, and I think the doors have changed location over the years. The commissioner approved the doors being in disposition for the purpose of having two retail tenants in 2010.
I'm only asking because I'm wondering whether, whether the recess, recess is historic, or whether the chamfering, the diagonal, is historic, or neither? Because why otherwise might we not create two entries on flat condition at the, at the street pace?
The, the floor plan, the chamfered floor plan of the recess is historic, that's historic floor plan. And just the position of the doors which have changed, but the, the enclosure of the building is, is the same. I'm proceeding with the, there's a, there's a second part of this proposal, which has to do, excuse me, which has to do with the, the stonework at this. This is a, it's a bit of a second issue. This building, very unusual, it has limestone going all the way down to the ground, and it's very unusual to have limestone touching the ground because it does very poorly. This limestone is very coarse, tends to absorb water, is deteriorated by salt, it's easily irradiated by hand trucks, and so the constant effort to patch and repair this, these stones. And it's much more common to have granite for the base, of course. And so the salt is kind of unsightly a chronic maintenance problem of, of having to keep coming back to or repair the, the stonework over and over again. We wanted to propose replacing the bottom 14 inches of limestone with granite, which is a much more common detail. So we would remove the limestone to the depths of about three inches, 14 inches off the ground, across where, at the end where there's a stone facade, and replace it with granite pieces of the details. But we just wanted to show that it is so common to have granite on the ground that there are actually ten buildings on this block of limestone facades indicated in blue that all have granite bases. And so we wanted to suggest that having limestone based in this building was almost a, feels a bit of a construction error from 1906. And that really it should have been granite, and to solve this problem, we can really keep it with all the other builders, this block, and put in a granite base, which would be lined up with the plinth and then going across the, like, the, basically. And there are samples of granite limestone there to a little concern.
Any questions? Yes, and customers will take that, make them after you. Kelly Carroll?
Hi, Kelly, this is our Mr. Johnson. H T C believes the proposed storefront intervention is because of security concerns, she just heard. They still there are less invasive alternatives such as cameras and lighting that could be installed and concealed in the socket of the recess entryway, introducing a cove transom to house security gates and interruption to the proportions of the original entryways transoms, resulting in a perceptible loss on facade. The proposed gate has likely disappeared from the Ladies Mile, why is it needed now? But I've heard why it's needed now, that's several of our statements, issues increasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? All right, we have our resolution from Manhattan Community Board Five recommending approval on the application. Do you want to respond to some of those comments or have the interruption of the proportions of the building?
Um, yeah, that's my, we, we did take a look at some of the other storefronts on the block, and we, we note that although the, the classic locked buildings certainly do all have this very symmetrical monumental, in comparison with the two story or three story storefront expression, the storefronts themselves are really largely have changed over time, and there's a large variety, some have grills, some have awnings, sometimes it's modern, sometimes it's historic. We felt that the extreme variety of storefronts within these monumental architectural contexts supported this small portion of the transit.
Yes, Anne. Mike, we have one more question. Can you address the options you have at the back of the package and why those are not supposed to be moved?
So, so we looked at many different ways we could solve this problem, and we're right, the overhead grill is the best one. But staff asked us to include some of these in case of questions. So, thank you. So we did look at the idea of a scissor gate, which would be coming from the sides. And we found that a scissor gate is, because of the closeness of the door to the column, the scissor gate, when we track it, which is not invisible, would actually be kind of sticking out into the space, you see it on the left of the airplan, and would be quite visible, and to us is much more of a distraction, more visible for the experience of the retail store and also architecturally business, at high level. We looked at ways where we could avoid having that, that folded gate stick out into the space. And the only way to do it was to reduce the width of the doors, have an unequal pair of doors, a three foot door and a two foot, eighteen inch door on the other side. And this is objectionable to the retail tenants, who, who is a furniture store, for their own functional reasons. And then we also looked at, you know, the idea of what would it mean to completely recess the gate like this? But that means, means even more of a reduction in the width, which is partially applicable for the tents. So we decided in the end, rather having an unequal pair of doors and inevitably visible grill right at high level, right at door level, having it 12 feet in the air and kind of disguised to look like the windows above was the least intrusive way to go.
All right, other questions? Thank you. What's the motion that goes to hearing?
Second.
My favor?
Hi.
Okay. So, I think that was helpful to understand the exploration and study of other alternatives. And I think that, just on its own, the commission, it has approved security gates, we often encourage ones that are concealed behind the transom light element, so, and then, of course, encourage open linked gates that are still transparent, so. And also, the commission has, you know, historically, the storefronts, the question is a good one, because historically, there were storefronts in many of these buildings at the plane, and the recess is not a typical feature that is defining all of the, the spring buildings of the district. So you can imagine certain, that this plane, that might serve as a reason to have a fixture in this line, and that is still transparent. But what do people think? It's really about this portal at the end of the day, because I think the link is very transparent.
I think, given the scale of this storefront, which is really monumental, that it can support that added fascia inside. And also, it's ultimately, it is reversible, you could take it out at some point if it's no longer needed.
I, I don't disagree, but I do think that there's, there's totally no harm in recessing it in and boxing it on the interior of the store a little bit, such that the jams could be concealed behind the columns, or substantially concealed behind the columns. And that would also allow the fascia to step back a little bit from the existing molding line of the second floor, which I think will preserve the, the current leading of facade without, without any damage, you know, reveal of the facade on the inside of it, it's not our problem.
Others? Okay, this is, this is, this is, okay, so I think, yeah, they can continue to explore that, but otherwise, we'll vote for approval as is. Okay.
What about the stonework and base of the?
Thank you.
I think the plan is better chose.
All right, so I think we'll find with that aspect as well.
In the matter of L P C twenty dash zero seven one seven zero, twenty six West Seventeenth Street in Manhattan, Manhattan District. Bozart Style Store involves building designed by Marvin C. Brown and built 1907-08. Application is to install a roll down security gate assembly of the facade. I know that the building's style and scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Ladies Mile of the Smart East District. I recommend approval. Finding that the installation of the roll down security gate assembly at the recess entrance bay will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. But the housing of the gates will be located within a new socket at the recess entrance, and the plant's details are to be finished with a trimmer, installing the security gate tracks and housing allowed to blend with the storefront framing. But the presence of the new trimmer and open match security gate enclosing the TV recess center bay of this heavily framed, rattled storefront, without minimal visual impact, will not detract from the, from the building or the streetscape. And that the proposed granite cores of the building's base and rebase will provide a more durable condition than recalls of traditional use of granite at the base of the building, and will be used for the limestone above.
Second, your favor?
Hi. My kitchen. The next item is number seven, L P C twenty dash zero three two five seven, an application for a certificate of appropriateness of Manhattan Block twelve ninety three lot sixty six, five ninety five Madison Avenue, the fourth floor of the original interior block. In our deco style skyscraper, designed by Walker July, twelve thirty three, eight twenty nine, application is to install at the top of the head of the building.
How are you? Little favor.
According to the insurance, we have a preservation app. This item is five ninety five Madison Avenue. It's located on the northeast corner of Madison Avenue and East Fifty Seventh Street. The proposal is to install new cooling towers and mechanical room at the eighteenth floor set back tiers, right here. The proposed changes are driven by The proposed changes are driven by the building's need to meet the New York City Climate Mobilization and Energy Standards. The proposed towers are visible over primary and secondary facade along Sixty Seventh Street and in limited locations along Madison Avenue and East Fifty Eighth Street. Simon Young, the applicant, and members of the project team are going to present the proposal and to answer any questions.
I think we're going to just start with the existing conditions. So, here, this existing cooling tower located on the fifty eighth, uh, Fifty Seventh Street side of this space. What we're looking to do is now update and add additional three cooling towers. And at this point, before we really get into it, I want to also introduce the engine game is really the whole point of the project, the fog here, introducing this.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Kurt Roeder. I am with Coleman Copeland Associates. I'm a mechanical engineer by trade. So, to begin with, why did we start with this cooling tower? Originally, this project started about a year ago when we were looking at replacing a cooling tower, as has been pointed out by Simon, that exists in, okay, where's the thing? Well, I'm a laser. Thank you. Currently, there's a cooling tower that exists right here on this eighteen floor cooling tower. And that cooling tower's come to the end of its usable life, as have several other cooling towers on this building, including one on the forty first floor roof, the ninth floor setback, and several on the second floor setback. The ones on the second floor setback are, they have a little bit more time, but not a huge amount. So, we were looking at this entire building study, and one of the things that we also do as a company is work with buildings on their energy use. Currently, five ninety five Madison uses between seventy two and seventy five KBtu per square foot per year of energy. And that's just not going to do it under the new local law ninety seven requirements. Roughly half of that is steam coming from the con ed service serving the building. The other half is coming from electricity, most of which is going into mechanical cooling. So, as a part of our study, we wanted to look at the building as a whole and try to treat it with systems that would work for the building as a whole. Currently, all of the cooling for the building that is off the Madison Avenue side tends to be air cooled. And there are a huge number of louvers, air cooled equipment, which tends to be far less efficient. And we were looking at getting rid of that. It's roughly twenty five percent more efficient to go water cooled over air cooled. The spaces on what would be this side of the building tend to be water cooled, but there was never a unified system for cooling in the entire building. So, by creating this tower system, which has the towers on top of the mechanical room, and we'll go into why we need to have that, we'll be able to water the entire building over the next ten to fifteen years. As we decommission existing units and decommission floors with air cooled equipment, we believe we'll also be able to beautify the building significantly, because if you've ever seen the facades of it, it's pop marked with existing louvers. Now, some of these louvers may not go completely away, because we're still going to be required to have outside air draw into the spaces. But we'll be able to remove, I believe I estimated between thirty five and forty five by six windows worth of louvers from the facades of the building. It will also allow us to remove an outside water riser that would run on the Fifty Eighth Street, the north side of the building. And we'll be able to clean up the facade of the building, which is also undergoing facade repair over the next two years. So what we're really trying to do is holistically think about the beauty, well being, and energy consumption of this building over the next fifty years, hopefully. I do want to get, here's the existing cooling tower in all of its glory on the back end of the building. The new cooling towers would actually sit right about here. There will be some other modifications to these ways. Trying to get to a section elevation, that way I can get out of your way and let people who can speak to the aesthetics a lot better than I can. I apologize, I'm an engineer, aesthetics are not my thing, so please don't hold that against us. So, in this upper left hand image here, you can see our cooling towers, which are not significantly larger than any other set of cooling towers, based on the physics and the thermodynamics of heat projection. You really can't make them so much smaller. This is about as efficient per unit volume of piece of equipment as we can get to get the eighteen hundred GPM, which is roughly nine hundred tons of cooling that we believe the building will need over the next twenty to thirty years, especially as we pull equipment off. The small mechanical room that you see below it is essentially as small room in height as we can get. We wanted to create as compact a design as possible, but we also needed to be able to pump water up the building, and that requires a secondary water loop. A secondary water loop requires that there's a grate between the water and the cooling tower before the water can be pumped up the building. You do that via a heat exchanger. The heat exchanger has to exist below the water level of the cooling tower, which is what requires us to create this mechanical room below, which does lift up the cooling towers. We did at one point look at putting the mechanical room to the side of the cooling towers, believing we might be able to get back some height. It doesn't really work all that well, because the heat exchangers, which are roughly six feet tall, would still need to be below the water level, which would mean that the cooling towers would still be on some sort of structural support at that point. The heat exchangers that will exist inside that mechanical room, right there, will then have piping that will, and Simon will point this out, piping that will go up the wall to the twentieth floor pump room. And that twentieth floor pump room will serve all floors from eighteen to the fortieth eventually. All floors below that will be served by individual pumps running off of the cooling tower down below. As of now, we will be using an exterior existing riser to service the existing units being cooled by this cooling tower. But in the very near future, a tenant will be moving out from under the cooling tower, and we'll be able to run these risers directly into the building, thus removing another exterior water riser from the north side of the building. We understand that this is a voluminous piece of equipment, but we are also trying to do our hardest to make the building as energy efficient as possible, which has been mandated by the city. It doesn't matter if you're a landmark building anymore. And also does its best to preserve the very beautiful facades of five ninety five Madison while removing what we would say is non necessary equipment from other pieces, other setbacks. And I know in my original, far more wordy, less aesthetically pleasing presentation here, we go through a lot of those elements, but as you can see, the nature of the setbacks of the building, there really is no other place that we can set this piece of equipment. We looked at every space that does have some room, including the second floor setback, which currently has cooling equipment on it, open cooling towers. The problem we run into there is those cooling towers were installed prior to the current dislike of empty network. And a lot of the operable windows in that area, as well as outside air intakes for floors three through twelve, exist in an area that we are not comfortable with continuing to use that area for cooling towers. Because there is no way of mitigating any drift from the cooling towers that exist there, we want to eventually remove those cooling towers and use that space for air cooled equipment, which will be far better for the health, safety, and welfare of the tenants of the building. And I will turn this back over to Simon, he will make it sound a lot prettier than I did.
Oh, you did pretty good. So, essentially that's really the main focus for the reason why of this project. Obviously, there's an architectural impact on this building, which we'll kind of get to. And what we did, we took some existing photos of this space, visibility on the street, from the Fifty Seventh Street side all the way around the building. So you can see today, there's an existing tower updated at the Fifty Seventh Street side. You really, you can kind of see it here, but not that much. This is an existing, of the actual setback of the eighteenth floor, shows the existing damage that's there. There's the cooling tower at this point. And again, we really tried to minimize the actual impact of it. And the new cooling tower was only several feet tall and was already here. And this is just another view of the setback. So what does that do to the actual visibility of the space? We had created models from the Fifty Seventh Street side, you see the orange here, see if you ever see it so slightly? This is also here. Now, what's currently, it favors one side now, we try strategically locate it in the center of the actual setback. So we try to limit the visibility on both ends of the street. Here, I know maybe here you'll see it a little bit more, but almost further back on the park avenue side. And this one is just a, you see a sliver of it on the Seventh Street side. I want to keep in mind, obviously, the mockups in orange, but our intent here is just to create an enclosure to this unit where the color will match the building. So, unless you're really specifically looking for it, you're not going to really see it. It's going to blend in with the existing building itself. This is the Madison Avenue street view. Again, I don't think you can really see it. You could kind of see the existing unit as it was on site, you know, but the other end you're not going to see it really well, this is actually the unit today. East Fifty Eighth Street side, here, you'll see the back here, you just never see it or so slightly. So just kind of help you, give you a visualization of what we actually do with it. Now, this is just a mockup. It is a little bit larger than what was mockup, but it will actually be there, it's maybe several feet, even setback than what it's shown. We did a full rendering of what this unit would look like. As you can see, it's really tied back to the building. We did strategically, as much as possible, back to the building, centralizing its location. Here's just another view of the mockup versus what the renderings would look like. Again, the color of the mockup is just going to blend in with the existing facade of the building. And I'm just not going to go too deep into this, but essentially, we did other studies, set, set, we're locating it, again, instead of, it's tied back almost as much as possible to, this is the parrot of the setback now. Can't really go any further. And I guess I'm not going to bore you with the essential construction because of the focus of that to that depth at this point.
All right, any questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? All right, we do have a resolution from Community Board five recommending denial of the application. Well, it would be highly visible from numerous points, particularly on Fifty Seventh Street. Would interrupt the landmarks, elegant cascade silhouette, and dovert architectural tension between different, the different sections. Okay. Any final questions? Does it have a motion to close the hearing?
Second, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, if this was presented to us, this is a, really a substitution taking away this cooling tower, but a lot of other mechanical equipment that is now seen, some of the windows and some setbacks, and consolidating in one place off of the main tower, seen in the context of mostly the backdrop of the building, very few spots where you can actually see it. Again, the sky was limited and was over backwards. People more or less comfortable with this? Okay, great, good. And it's nice that you're addressing the building holistically and the plans holistically for the launch. Thank you for your careful sign art. Okay, Anne? No, Diana, sorry.
Regarding five ninety five Madison Avenue, I recommend official and insider landmark, the application is to install roof top and mechanical power. I note that the proposed work is driven by the apartments built on Ninety Seven New York City Concentrification Act, which requires our construction to satisfy three strict greenhouse gas emission limits through building materials starting since twenty twenty four, and that certain goals are not exempt from compliance. I recommend approval finding that the proposed work will not damage any existing architectural features of the location of mechanical equipment at the setback roof terrace to the side of the main tower, will not detract from the symmetrical stepping of the deception beside of the tower, the, that the mechanical equipment will be visible typically at the angle. And we primarily see conjunctions secondary to side and adjacent unvisited buildings rather than perceived as part of the individual landmark building. That mechanical equipment enclosure will have a neutral beige finish that matches the stone cladding of the building, thereby causing it to slightly see from view. That installation will consolidate equipment located elsewhere in the building allowed for a reduction in existing through window louvers at primary facades, and the gate will need to install additional through window louvers at primary facades, there resulting in a restoration of the building and reducing the overall visual impacts of existing mechanical equipment that tracks from the special architectural historic character of the building, and that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building. Second.
On favor? Any approvals? Okay, that's approved, thank you.
And the next item is number eight, LBC twenty dash zero two zero six, for certificate of progress in Borough Manhattan, Block twelve ten, Lot forty nine, one thirty two West Eighteenth Street, Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, Renaissance Revival Style Roadhouses, out by Henry Anderson, and the application is to construct a new construction project.
The item before you is one thirty two West Eighteenth Street. The building is located on the south side of West Eighteenth Street, between Amsterdam and Columbus Avenue, within the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. The proposal before you today is to construct a one story addition at the roof. The proposal currently does not meet our rules for a staff level approval due to its proximity to the rear facade, only one foot away, and a height of twelve feet. The building is one of the Row three Renaissance Revival style roadhouses, as we can see here in these historic images from the nineteen forties and nineteen eighties. The block currently has numerous existing rooftop additions, as we can see marks of orange on this block plan, the proposed addition is marked in pink. Additionally, in the sightline section drawn, we can see that the addition is not visible for the primary facade. It is in fact not visible for any location. Here we can see existing conditions of one thirty two West Eighteenth Street, again confirming that the mockup is not visible. Here we can see the rear of one thirty two West Eighteenth Street, please note the corals corners at the roof line, which will be retained as part of this proposal. A mockup was constructed to study the visibility of the proposed rooftop addition, as we can see in these photographs, and again, not visible for public fair wear. The applicants have annotated this image to provide further context of existing rooftop additions in the block. We can see that there are numerous one story additions throughout, with the proposed addition at one two three. Here we can see a rendering of the proposed addition, which features standing seam metal cladding with a gray finish, glass railings at the roof. And please note there are two existing masonry chimneys, which will also be extended as part of this proposal. Here we can see a section of the proposed addition, which is tall, plain height, and setback from the front facade. The addition is sited adjacent to the rear facade due to the existing placement of the internal stair walls we can see, as well as an existing rooftop skylight. Here we can see some existing conditions, floor plans and photographs of the roof, including the two chimneys that will be extended as part of this proposal. Here we can see the internal floor plan of the new addition, as well as the proposed roof plan. In these elevation drawings of the addition, we can again see the finishes. There are going to be aluminum clad window and door assemblies, there will be a ladder for FDMY access. The applicants are proposing to slope the rear facade of the addition forward to help distinguish it from the original building below, as we can see in this section. You can also see the slope of the rear facade of the addition in these renderings of the proposed addition. And the architect is here to provide additional information and answer any questions you have. Thanks.
Thank you. And you know, I think that, as Liz stated, the reason this is before us is because the staff is only off the reason this is before us is because the staff is only off the grid. We've moved up additions that are 11 feet tall, and this is 12 feet tall. And then the other criteria that it doesn't meet is that it is, um, set only one foot back from the rear facade. The staff can only put additions set three foot back from the rear facade. So it's really that extra foot of height and a proximity to the rear facade. So I think it would be helpful if you could focus on those issues.
Sure. Sir, my name is Matt Seidel. Um, yeah, to follow up on that, what's, what's really driving this is that there's an interior staircase right through the middle of the building. And that's kind of setting the back plane of the north face of our proposed addition. And then when you combine that with this kind of very tight internal layout, you can see very faintly the dash line of the bed right there. Our, we couldn't, we couldn't take this wall and shift it even further north to create even more of a setback. So our aesthetic decision was to make this kind of almost a manser type slope to the back facade here. I think it's actually kind of a nice, nice solution. Um, so the, although the windows pop out, the line of the building goes straight up. You have a setback here, then the building goes straight up, and then it slopes further. In terms of the material palette, uh, our intention was to use the standing seam metal roof, as we thought it, it again gave a little bit of a nod to the manser kind of language that you see, and decided more to carry the feel to, than say, a brick, which would not actually really have a whole lot of use or replace it at that point.
So to dive into that issue about the stairwell and the skylight?
Yes.
Why can't you pour the skylights?
Uh, the skylight, uh, has to be maintained there for its, its building skylight. There's also, there's also, our shareholder is also limited to their, the share actually ends at the, the skylight right there as well.
Okay. And why 12 feet, why not 11?
Um, it's really being driven by, um, the rear slope, um, and then also the thickness of the roof. I mean, could it, could it go down by a foot? It, we could probably squeeze it down by a foot. But that also didn't, uh, yeah.
Yeah, but I think that, that we did that additive roof for elevation direction of the competition, so it sort of fits within the height of the other.
So yeah, it's actually quite, yes, it is lower than the upper competition.
Are there questions? Yes.
What does a sloping wall do?
Well, our intent was that because we, we understand that, um, LBC would prefer to, to kind of, would prefer that, uh, any kind of rooftop addition doesn't align with the rear elevation of the building with setback. And so we set it back slightly, but we also thought that it would, um, because we couldn't set it back a full three feet, we thought that that slope would, would, would help visually with that. Does that answer your question?
Other questions? We have some testimony. We'll come back to you. Sean Chrisandey.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sean presented the landmark request. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates this thorough and organized presentation. In many other cases, the committee has disapproved of similar designs for rooftop additions. However, while the design finishes may be milked toast, the applicant has been successfully producing an addition that respectfully differentiates itself from the existing building and is responsibly planned from the existing fabric of the building for the block. The committee particularly appreciates the applicant's decision to place rooftop addition even further back than the roof's neighbors, but would hope it can still be pulled tight slightly forward from the existing rear wall. Restorative interventions to the rear facade parts retaining and repairing the existing brick corbeling could thus better shine against the matching existing painted brick colors or using chimney caps in all sorts. Our committee, uh, our Certificate of Appropriateness Committee would support this application for rooftop addition with slight modifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. While the proposed addition is modest, HDC asks that it be setback the customary three feet from the edge of the rear wall to separate it from the existing, existing historic facade. But I heard why, yeah, thanks.
Mark Diller.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mark Diller, I'm the Chair, Community Board Seven. Uh, we too recommend approval of this application for a couple of reasons. Um, one, of course, is that you heard that the neighboring townhouses, many of them have rooftop additions, some of which are actually visible. This will not be, so that's, that's a plus. Um, the, uh, while the materials are, um, modest, they also hearken back to those zinc clad utilitarian structures that were very typically found on the tops, um, buildings in our historic districts. And therefore, um, th- this seems more appropriate because of it. Um, we appreciated the champered or angled, um, element in that respect because that's, it almost looks, starts to look like a bulkhead rather than, um, an occupiable space. Um, the, uh, we agree that the, uh, restoration of the corbeling and we're pleased to see that there's no effort to change the punched windows on the floor below, which is a part of the same apartment. Uh, so we thought that was sensitive overall and bespoke of the applicant's intentions here to conform to the historic district. The last thing I'll say is that, um, one of the reasons why we were not troubled by the one-foot setback instead of the typical three is that the materials are so markedly different than the rear facade and from those grounded. So it does already create the, um, through materials as opposed to, um, physical space. It creates the separation that we want in that kind of a context. And so overall, we found the, um, the, uh, application to be appropriate, and we recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have to add anything? Add anything else? Or respond to anything? Any other questions? I guess I just had one question. You chose to start your slope. Actually, so you kind of demonstrate the parroted, maybe slope back.
Yes.
And that is three feet.
And that was really through, we did a few iterations and visually preferred this one.
And did, did you look at, if you did angle it more, did it really make much of a difference in the end?
No, it didn't. We, and again, we kind of just went through a number of iterations and arrived at this opinion most visually pleasing to us.
Yes, one more question.
Well, I was, it would be my suggestion that it be lowered if what is offered. And that the angle be somewhat increased to be more like a real manser. This is, uh, I don't think you'd agree with that, but I understand. I think people would see it, just the people in the building, I kind of, I don't know. That's, I think exactly, just.
So I think we're moving into comments. Is there a question that we're already aware of?
The angle, does it tilt back to the three feet or does it just tilt back?
It tilts back to the three feet.
To the face of the?
I'm sorry, it tilts back two feet, not, not three feet. It's, uh, this angle, this dimension.
For that front edge to?
Yeah, two front, yes.
So it just tilts back one foot?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any last questions? Okay, let's have a motion to close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. So it's a non, a rooftop addition, not visible from a public light, but it is sitting close to the rear facade, which is why we're wanting to see it today. And so, um, because of its proximity, and I think, um, we understand there isn't room to shift it or, and if you set it back more, you should have. Bedroom is quite small, so one could set it back another foot and let it sit at the bedroom. But I think some ideas that have been talked about here are because it's kind of, it's basically the rear wall lowering it and maybe angling it more. Do people feel like that would be a good solution here?
I don't. Close to the back of the side. I understand that it can't back over internal, it would be some of the best of it. Our concern, I think, with the back end. But drawing shows where the rooftop additions are on this block. Uh, maybe one of them, or maybe that, or this part at the back. I think that was a good addition, I think. We should follow that.
Yeah. We have other instances used this angle as a way to improve something closer to the rear facade. And I think that's why I was thinking if it were more of an angle, so people would be comfortable with it. Okay, so others? More angle, if we had more of an angle to set, pull it back from the wall. And lowering it? And lowering it, just because it's so close to the, on the rear wall. Okay. Okay, if we can make it look a little smaller and pull it away. Okay. So I, um, are you comfortable with that, like, I'm not sure.
What, what is the material? Can you elevate it?
Yeah.
As opposed to, um, or, it's not for us to say, but it's, after that, the, uh... Testimony?
If we can play that, we see, see.
You can do a gray, gray threshold of the block, rather than the bronze colored.
Okay, let's do that. Ready?
In the matter of 132 West 8th Street, Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, an application to construct a rooftop addition, I recommend approval of this application's finding that the construction of the proposed rooftop addition will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features. The proposed rooftop addition will not be visible from any public or affair. The proposed rooftop addition is modest in size and will not overwhelm the building. That the design and materiality of the addition, featuring dark metal, standing seam clad, and punched window openings, is consistent with other rooftop accretions within the district, will help to remain a secondary presence in the roofscape. However, um, the rooftop addition will have a sloped rear facade, which will help to mitigate its proximity to the rear wall. It will be painted gray to approximate a zinc finish. And we recommend that the height of the addition be lowered and the slope be increased.
Second. On favor? Any opposed?
Okay, we're going to resume in one last item before lunch break. Uh, this is item number nine. LBC 19-3774, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in Borough of Manhattan, block 1198, block 5456, West 8th Street. We have the West Side Central Park West Historic District. Renaissance Revival House, with the old brick style windows set by Tom Wilson, and built in 2006, 87. Application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, anyone in Preservation Staff? The application before you today is to construct a rear yard addition at 566 West 85th Street, located on the south side of West 85th Street, in between Central Park West and Columbus Avenue and the Upper West Side to Central Park West Historic District. The proposed addition is being reviewed by the commission today because it is three feet past the predominant projection of rooftop additions within the block. Uh, here is a block, and here, the front facade where number is taken place. So here is the rear facade. And the proposed one-story addition at the rear yard will be adjacent to this rear L. It'll have masonry walls and a metal and glass window assembly at the south facing facade, and a partially sloped roof featuring skylights. There is an error in this axo drawing, in which there should be one additional floor of the, uh, building. As you can see here, there are two floors above the rear L instead of them. And the, uh, proposed addition is showing, identified correctly in the plan as being at the base of the floor. So here we have the land view showing this sort of additional projection past the rear L. Block plan did the footprint of the proposed, sort of showing how that affects the central green space. Uh, detail plan and elevation showing that the addition will be constructed just below the corbeling at the parlor floor. So assuming that we have that detail. And the applicant is here to discuss any additional questions.
Is there anything you want to add right now?
I don't think I have the, you know, up there. Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Paul Brayer. I'm the editor of the record. The only thing I would add is that, I'm going to get this a little bit back. The dominant, the use of the term dominant projections or dominant extensions is really kind of a misnomer because there are so many bollocks in this block that create these teeth that go under the so-called domets, that the outliers in the, in the calculation of what would be average, basically at the average, you did this because you've got 12 seven-foot extensions, you've got 18-foot extensions, you've got predominance of 13-foot extensions, a 14-foot extension. But the real effect, I can get this in a bit back. Between the existing and the proposed dominant is two feet. And the normal way to see all the domets is around 10,000 square feet, so. 10,000 feet in there. So you don't really see, I think. It's strictly a judgment point, and the owners were...
And the garden is also, the garden is also managed by fences, and below the fence as well.
Yes, and in fact, the adjacent, this adjacent, um, extension is three stories tall. This one is four stories tall. And from, from the adjacent, but you can't actually see very much of one. We're doing an infill, we have, it's pretty much invisible.
Yes, Michael.
So the, the, the walls are made out of bricks, block? The, the wall on, uh, to, I can't see this.
Left, right?
This is the only actual wall we have to build this structural, that was block. This will be faced with brick, and this will be faced with three-foot extension.
The doors are wood, or metal?
The doors, it, it's a, building department lexicon, this is a greenhouse. So it has to be in the muscle. So they are.
Metal?
Yes. It'll be metal sliding.
Metal sliding?
No, metal, um, friendship.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Other questions? You take testimony? Sean Chrisandey?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sean presented the landmark request. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee found this presentation difficult to read. With blurry plans and few dimensions, it's hard to determine the scope of the applicant's intervention. Most of the committee could decide first. This rear yard addition appears to be minimally obtrusive due to its low height of one story, but also appears to approach within the 30-foot rear yard into the doughnut, which is particularly intact. Every home excluding this one house that runs on West 84th Street has retained its dog-like rear yard. Should this application improve this nearly intact doughnut be scraped early from its historical plan, setting a dangerous precedent that could lead to more alterations on the block? The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee recommends the applicant reconsider their plans, reapplying an easier to understand presentation for a more simple intervention. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. This application did not provide sufficient information for HDC to evaluate this intervention in terms of appropriateness of design materials or details. We do believe, however, that the proposed extension is an intrusion and violation of the zoning, uh, rear yard requirement. Thank you.
Mark Diller.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Mark Diller, I'm the Chair, Community Board Seven. And I apologize that our resolution as before you is a bit of a mess. Uh, so please ignore it, and I'll provide you with our words ruling on this instead by oral testimony. Um, and as you might have guessed from the mess that's before you, um, our original committee recommendation was to approve. Um, it got partially turned around in full board. So the part that remains as a recommendation of approval is the one-story infill of to the 30-foot block, lot. Uh, we found that to be, uh, appropriate in that, uh, one of our major objectives in these infill between the Ls, uh, kind of, uh, rear yard additions or full width additions is when we create this cul-de-sac, this dark cul-de-sac. this dark cul-de-sac in the backyard that is well, attractive and compromises the neighbor here because of the way the Ls work in AAA rhythm instead of an AB rhythm. It actually would facilitate rather than, um, that harm, that rhythm. Um, the part that got turned around in full board is that full board lines the greenhouse part of this to be inappropriate. Uh, for the same reason that we find it also to be a violation of the building department, uh, the zoning law, which is that it has to be a temporary structure. And to fall, uh, an infill, um, extending beyond the 30-foot line to be a temporary structure when it's composed of, uh, brick masonry walls and a solid core roof is to exalt form over substance. It is a permanent structure. I believe it violates, um, it violates zoning, but it certainly is inappropriate to have a permanent structure invade the donut as far as this one does. And so for that reason, the board voted overwhelmingly to disapprove just the greenhouse portion of this. And again, I apologize that the written document before you makes a hash of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Would you like to respond to the comments? Maybe give some clarification of the, um, I think that we have an objection to our ability to say that it applies to zoning, or something. Maybe also just talk about where the 30-foot line is and the whole blocks.
Sure. I mean, the 30-foot line is where the small extension, which is here. Greenhouse extension, this six-foot to the rear wall. Not clear, and I don't deal with clear, what they mean by temporary structure. Uh, this is going to sit on the slab if it can be removed. That makes it relatively temporary. It is required to be metal because it has to be in the muscle. And it has to be mostly black, as opposed to a non-commissional greenhouse. That's the intent of it. The other thing I would respond to is the, um, statement that there are no other infills in the Ls. There are several, actually. And you can see them here, here, back here, the pole, give an angle to the, um, hut. Okay, that's, that's just, there are some.
So, but my question is, we have, the, I mean, we're not going to second guess what that permitted obstruction is, so do you have an objection sheet?
This is a professional certification.
Okay.
I redesign and I say it's okay, and then they audit and then we have to take it down.
And so the extension into the 30-foot.
It's six.
Six foot. If, um, it's, the property line is the same for all of the adjacent houses, it seems that even the historic Ls and other additions also projected to that.
Yes.
So.
Yes, oh, five, about three feet. We, we did a six-foot extension and the part that hits beyond our existing extension is three. Um, most of these long here are around 13 feet, 13, 14 feet. These are obviously much longer, this one is much longer. These are all in the range of 13 to 14 feet, and the one next is 17.
So they all project into that certain part of the building?
Well, they were all built before this, so.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? That's great.
Oh, not for you, it's served for us. I'm aware of self-certified issues. Somehow I never associated those with, um, applications that came to here. I wonder, I know a lot of self-certified zoning, um, issues will come before us.
Are you asking whether they're self-certified and they are overturned?
No.
He's asking whether they're, yeah, they're self-certified.
Yeah, they're self-certified.
Yeah, we, I mean, we. I'm going to say they're frequent, but we do get them and often it is when they're at the basement level where FDR is counted for differently and all things of that nature, or generally similar, similar projects.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's have a motion to close the hearing. On paper. Okay, so, um, this extends three feet beyond the L. And I think this infilling in this case between two Ls seems like it doesn't attract the building, the adjacent buildings or the green space, um, because it's a vessel between the two. Um, and then the question about whether projecting three feet beyond the existing L and some of the other Ls, um, whether that's appropriate. And there are other additions and buildings that go deeper into this green space than this particular L. Um, and this is only one story. So how do people really, do you feel that this projection would have an immediate impact on the green space?
I, I, I think it's, I think it's okay. I think the drawings really need to be worked on. They're, they're, they're not up to the level that I think would allow for the staff to properly administer the job. Uh, if you look at the photographs of the facade and compare it with this drawing comparing to the plan, nothing matches. Beaters aren't drawn, there's going to be a six or eight inch wall that's going to get very close to that little window. And I think that, I think it's fine, but the staff should work with the applicant to get drawings to be where they reflect the actual provisions, the actual planned construction, and that it doesn't, uh, impact the building in a negative way.
Agreed. And?
Also, I know in page five that the note for the, the doors to the greenhouse column is being firebloss. So I know that's what that means, but if they have to be in the muscle, they won't be firebloss.
All right, so, so we will have to, um, work carefully with the applicant on the drawings, make sure that it is constructed in a way that everybody expects around this table. Okay.
In the matter of, excuse me, in the matter of LPC 19 dash 3774, uh, 56 West, 85th Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, the application is to construct a rear yard addition. Um, noting the building styles, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the, uh, the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, I recommend approval, finding that the construction of the proposed rear yard addition will not eliminate any significant structural features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from fighting approaches, that the one-story addition will be meso, uh, the size of an existing three-story retail extension and will only project slightly beyond it, and therefore will not diminish the presence of a rear yard or impact the central green space, and that the wood will not detract from the special character of the building of this historic district. Uh, however, I recommend that the applicant wants closely to provide, uh, clearer, better, uh, drawings to reflect the condition.
Second. On paper, may I oppose?
I have the postscript, very quick, postscript. I want to thank Mark Gill for appearing here so frequently. Um, I think it's wonderful that the head of a community board would come and breathe and clarify. And it must be one of the largest collections of historic buildings in our, in our, in any of the community boards. And the fact that he does it, clarifies it, uh, even describes it as hash, therefore he wants us to understand what he really means. I think it's just a terrific service and I really appreciate it. I think we all.
Okay, so, we're going to wait for lunch, we'll come back at one o'clock. We just have one item after lunch, right? So everyone will be all in touch.
Okay, commissioners, we're going to start our reading session. Uh, it's just one item for today, that's item number 10, LPC 20 dash 05974, an application for a binding report in Manhattan, block 1454, block 11. 4541, East 59th Street, the community's old bridge, which was a landmark. Was our style of bridge, designed by Gustav Lindenthal and Henry Horvostel and built in 1908. Application is to replace infill, a residential, a self-signage, and also involve the space for the bridge.
Good afternoon, cap'n, preservation department staff. Uh, this proposal, as you just heard, is for one of this section of the bridge on Manhattan Side. It has a number of components. So I'm just going to go straight to introducing Lauren George and Constanter Bellon to start your round with describing the project.
Can we get to the mic? Nice to you, everyone. Um, Lauren George, as Catherine mentioned, um, representing that equity, uh, seeks to acquire the bridge market space from EDC in the least. Um, I know you, many of you experienced this about a year ago. It was an application that was approved. And we're here to share with you, um, an exciting renovation and a new view of that application. So looking at the history of the, of the bridge, as you know, it was, as you mentioned, built in 1908, uh, Gustav Lindenthal and Henry Horvostel, influenced by the Pont Mirabeau in Paris. Um, the bridge is a through-type cantilever, 7,000 feet. It was related to drill and opening up Queens to develop and connecting the Harlem Road and the Long Island Road. Um, and you, the landmark preservation commissioner, said we did this bridge in 74, 1974. And I would like to point out that this is not interior landmark space, so the way that you're looking at this today is a little bit different than you look at a normal interior landmark. It was originally an exterior open space, and the cantilever, um, involved were really, um, a fireproofing technique. And it was, uh, like I said, a utilitarian space. So we're looking at this today as a new, um, iteration of the bridge market space. The only mention of this space that we're viewing today in the landmark donation report is a one platoon. Areas below the bridge known as the cathedral are notable for their wassivino tile vaulting. The grid market space of this began as a public space, um, in 1912. Uh, this photo from 1912. So Raphael Wassivino, um, founded his fireproofing company based on the Catalan vault technique, which is a basket weave pattern for vaults, really, um, for its utilitarian fireproofing, um, characteristic. So each of these vault spaces is 30 by 34-foot bays that range in, in height from 24 feet at the western edge to 44 feet in the east towards the river. And they're really, um, special. You can find wassivino tile vaults, an example is an elephant, um, at the city hall subway station right here.
Right here.
Uh, it's in this building, as you know, it's a path by your day. Uh, the Ramseu, Elephant House, and other sites around the city, um, as well as around the country. Um, so I thought it was interesting, we're bringing back a grocery store to this location because right after, or sort of during the outbreak of World War I, there were food price shocks that really caused shortages and dramatic, you know, price support, the shocks of New York City. And the city started using space for a free location for farmers to come and sell their works directly to New York City President. Um, it became enclosed after being used as a public market in this way in about 1916 as part of the city's push to get pushcart colors off the streets, which is also interesting to a bit. Um, so we're happy to bring back a grocery store and remind us of what's done here. Uh, this was made into an enclosed space about a hundred years ago. The public, this is a photo of the enclosure, about 1916. The city did this, created the Department of Public Market. A photo of the inside, um, a hundred years ago before the changes today. Then it was used, unfortunately, the depression exposed and used by the DOT for several decades for signage, um, storage and stable storage. Basic quick timeline, um, and after designation in 1977, the predecessor to the EDC, we put out an RPD to redevelop the space, and it went through quite a litigation and real estate crisis. Finally, it was redeveloped and renovated in the late 90s and Food and Boring went there in 2000. Um, it's been operating 15 years and then closed after AARP shut down. We're eager to bring a trade to this back to the site. To reactivate this space, it's been taken up for about five years already. So if you're looking at some exterior photos, um, existing conditions, 59th Street, uh, is the main entrance, South Street, South entrance, where there's the plaza existing today. The Food and Boring sign is still there. Um, we're proposing a very similar signage scheme and have a lot of interventions to this 59th Street side. If you look at 60th Street side, we are, um, proposing, you know, new signage to match the brand and also, um, opening two, uh, bays for freight, uh, two loading docks on the 60th Street side, which we'll get into in a little bit later. Some interior existing condition photographs. This mezzanine here that you see in the bottom right photo is a 90s nonhistoric fabric. It's an isolating sort of partition of the space. And our proposal really allows, proposes to remove that and, um, not cut up and bifurcate the space as much. We're working in the past with house area, which we want to more detail. The lighting that we're working with is really a sensitive, um, kind of reuse of this uplighting to enhance the cathedral-like spaces and the vaulting, so it brings the eye upward and celebrate the grandeur of the space. So I think the removal of this mezzanine that you see here in the bottom left is another part of our proposal that's important. Um, the two freight elevators, uh, on the 60th Street side, we'll get into more detail on the plan view. So I'd like to introduce Michael Diopata from Green Repair to explain the details of the state of course.
I'm sorry. Hello, everyone. Before I get into the, uh, details of the post-scope work, I just want to reiterate what was our guiding themes for the, uh, uh, design of both the exterior and interior of the space. Um, the exterior, we wanted to introduce, uh, Traver Jones' community as a good neighbor for a long period of time. We didn't want to do anything heroic in terms of the signage or do anything that isn't familiar. So we are in fact replicating the signage, uh, parameters and area. And additionally, um, we are introducing two, two new loading, uh, docks off of the, the turnoff that we'll go into so that the existing conditions, which are quite congested, is alleviated for the rest of the project. As well as the, um, the relocation of that mezzanine off of the North Base Curtain Mall. Um, we are going to position it on the easternmost bays behind existing opaque glass, which creates a jewel box of the space internally, and then at night it will activate the sidewalks and street malls. So that was, uh, our guiding principles for the, uh, exterior. Internally, obviously, um, we want to, um, we want to, uh, ensure that every view is a vista that accentuates, uh, unobstructed views of the columns and the wassivino vaults throughout. So what, how we achieve this in this design is that the, uh, proposed layout of the, uh, fixturing plant is much more open and low than the previous Michaels and Food and Boring schemes that were presented to the commission prior. Um, so you have vistas over and views over the fixturing throughout the space, front, back, side to side now. So here is the post-scope work. Additionally, to achieve the openness, you'll, I'll get into, uh, the concealed mechanical design, which is also, uh, I think a shortcoming of the previous Michaels scheme. We are, um, going to also, uh, make sure the lighting, as Lauren had talked about, uh, gets reinstalled in the same locations as the current uplighting within the space on the columns to accentuate the vaults with, once again, very much unlike the Michaels scheme, as we'll go through. So here's the proposed, uh, plan. So, here's the proposed, uh, I don't know. So, off of the sidewalk, we have a drop curve and a new entrance off of the sidewalk for front-back freight elevators. We need this for the current operations of Trader Joe's, they move ten-foot pieces of equipment.
Top of the wing?
Top of the wing?
Yeah.
There it is. Okay. So, we are proposing on revising the sidewalk to allow for the truck operations to come into the space and serve it exclusively from the rest of the existing loading for Guastavinos and TJ Maxx. The new position of the mezzanine is going to be on the eastern face, and I'll go through that in a moment. So, once again, ground floor plant, the scoping work is going to be replacing the entry doors with sliders in the existing openings. We are introducing the new loading scheme off of the sidewalk, which we'll talk about the bi-part doors, which will help meld into the existing curtain wall fabric into the opaque glass. The mezzanine, which is now on the easternmost bays, is less square footage than originally approved with the curtain linear morphing on the north. And as you can see, the fixturing plant is very open, high-quality and low to allow for, once again, a business. The function of, the function of the mezzanine is solely for the workers' back-to-house, and so the public is not, you know, it's not public space. Everything from the, within the eastern two loading bays is loading back to house. And then the cellar, you have open, you have walk-in pits for the elevators, which are two freight and ADA elevator that's required. From the sales floor up to the back-to-house mezzanine, there's a refrigerator room and the elevator control room is against the perimeter. So, the, once again, the major driving theme here is to organize the plan in such a way that we are relieving the north curtain wall from obstructions to get the natural light through and turn this space into a true jewel box. And the previous Michaels scheme, you can see, not only did the mezzanine act as an obstruction to this, but additionally, the mechanical design also was a large obstruction. Our current scheme is showing everything organized, back-to-house space in the easternmost bays, with in sequence, you have the stairs coming up, the ADA elevator, and then there's a, above the freight elevator override, there's a Munters unit, which is a dehumidification mechanical unit. Here's the eastern facade, the eastern interior elevation, where once again, we're showing the difference between the existing conditions, which has the mezzanine and the elevator override. Our's is, in fact, basically the same as in terms of height, except we have an employee restroom that's being introduced up on the mezzanine area. And that comes up eight foot six from the mezzanine height. Once again, the north elevation that was previously approved had the large tram line mechanical, it had introduced a new louver band in the easternmost curtain wall, as well as you can see the approach for lighting, which obviously creates a datum to keep your eye down, as opposed to bringing your eyes up toward the vaults and appreciating that view. Once again, Trader Joe's does not have an aggressive approach to apply their brand and signage to the space. And speaking of signage, this is the approach from the previously approved Michaels, where not only did they add blade signs, larger illuminated signs above the entry, but they also took blazing and put red film on it to be a little bit more self-promoting. So, once, once again, we are not proposing on adding any capacity to the existing glass. What we see is what is, is what we're proposing from the existing conditions, it's back-painted glass. Where we can, we'll try to remove some of that, as Catherine is walking the cycle of us. But you'll see here too, where our scope begins and ends, Guastavinos is the easternmost bays, and then there are two large vertical bays of opaque glass, where we are organizing all of our back-to-house space and elevator and all of that behind that. So it shields. Additionally, on the, on the Fifty-Ninth Street side, these bays are behind the Congrats or the TJ Maxx pavilion. So, so really from the corner of the avenue, you're not going to be able to see much of like this. You're not going to be able to see the back-to-house space through the curtain wall. Here's the, the proposed rather subdued signage program. What you see here, just so you know, the glass is in fact vision clear glass, except there are existing roll-down shades throughout the space on the, on the south side. So, we are introducing a new vestibule on the Fifty-Ninth Street side, no glass. On the Sixtieth Street entry, we, there is, there is an existing exit stair that accesses the cellar TJ Maxx space, we're not touching that. We are introducing new sliding glass entry doors to match the existing opening. Additionally, we have removed some existing partition walls and other odd items that were residual from the last design, opening things up. So, this is where we're going to start talking about the loading program. In the two bays that we talked about manipulating, what we're trying to do here is allow for the freight and the trucks come in and await and marry it into the fabric of the facade. And rather than have a roll-down gate and just say, you know, not try to make this match, we are trying to utilize a, it's a schweiz door, it's a bi-part door, where we're aligning the vertical monuments throughout and applying more opaque glass to the face of the door. So when it's inactive, it closes up in this position, and it blends into the facade. When it is activated, it produces not only access to your front-back freight elevators, but it gives the workers a little bit of weather protection, so we avoid having to ask for any kind of oning. So here's how we situate it, how it's proposed on working. We are also sectionally almost doing this like a window replacement program with LPC, where we're trying to match the sectional dimensions so that the adjacent fabric matches in terms of its depth and sectional properties. So here is that. Once again. You're starting to see some sectional information too. The tallest portion of, that we're imparting into the space is the ADA elevator, which we are in fact required to have via code, we have one of the five occupants on the mezzanine, so we are in fact holding to have a fixture elevator, not a lula. So this is the smallest, they override the D, and it allows still a workspace of over two feet from the spring point of the existing arch, so we're making sure that we avoid pressuring that too much. Here are some shots, which are pretty successful, of the lighting of the space from the Food and Boring. One thing that we do not have in our scheme is the, on the upper photo, we do not have the mezzanine, which, which is good, and we don't have the verticality and the pressure of the tight aisles of the display areas. So we can see all of this, as such. So once again, here's the, the space with the existing mezzanine, actually as a bit of a visual blockage. And here's our proposed organization of the back-to-house space and trying to pressure all of that height as low as possible to allow the eye to go back to the demising partition between our space and Guastavinos, which is mirrored. And it might be a funhouse trip, but it actually works. It's beautiful how your eye just keeps going, trumpeting, and you see the repetitive colliding, so it's, it's quite effective. And we are continuing. So once again, this is our sectional information, what is actually going on behind here in the back-to-house. There is trash doors, there's refrigerator, cooler rooms, and storage. And the way Trader Joe's operates is that they need that one-to-one relationship of back-to-house to their sales floor and constant back-and-forths. There is a need to have the adjacent back-to-house to the sales floor area. So, and also back, back to back-to-house. So, they are going to be using hand pallets and moving around some heavy equipment. So, to ensure that the historic fabric of the columns and their base are protected and reversible, we are proposing on putting a protective wall up full height to the underside of the mezzanine around each column that's sitting in this space. There are, we're going to see some interior elevations. Additionally, there are, okay, here's the, there are existing louver bands on the Sixtieth Street side that, that, the first one? Yeah. Yeah. All right. So, just, just know that there are two bays of existing louver band where they peeled it off and tapped into it, and right now there's plywood attached to it, so what we're planning on doing is matching the adjacent with the brick metal and the seaming detail. So that's.
I have a question. How do you get the air conditioning together?
There's a whole section on that where we can get there.
Yeah. Okay. Quickly, I'm so sorry. Okay, consume a calorie, I'm sorry. Because, because we were right through the Michaels scheme and we thought it was quite heavy-handed, we, you know, we wanted to ensure that this, that everything we're doing on protection for the space wasn't going to be ruined by mechanical design. So, these two upper photos show the existing, existing mechanical equipment up on the platform. However, these are what was proposed. In your books, you'll see the correct information. This is what was removed. Right now, there's currently nothing up there, so we're going to be placing four condensing units for VRF as well as chromataller. So this is the Michaels scheme I was talking about, with more blockages and capacity along the Sixtieth Street side. And this is our design, where we're bookending the fixture plant with a VRF cabinet, where we're running a refrigerate line underneath and we're providing air out at these points, as well as we have home package units above the back-to-house space that are blowing laterally in the proceeding of the separation between the back-to-house to the sales floor area. So here is the scheme. You will not see any exposed ductwork into the sales floor. You see the four, huh? You see the four condenser units that are sitting on the platform? This refrigerate line ducting, ducting, this, the lines run underneath the slab and pop into each one of the vertical cabinets. And then there are three package units with blow air, like I said, out of the front face of the separation wall. Additionally, this unit up here, which taps into the existing louver band, what you call the Munters unit, and it's basically a dehumidification unit for space. And it's all concealed. Interior floors, we're planning on putting two and three-quarters inches of finished concrete, which is like terracotta color. And the lighting, as we talked about, being delicate and non-heroic, we're basically replicated a much more gentle approach to a smaller fixture, but produces more eye efficacy, LEDs. But the attachment points, we are replicating to ensure that when we remove the existing, that we'll patch and repair and, and apply our new lights as such. And this is actually the study that came from, from the lighting manufacturer.
Is there going to be emergency lights also?
Uh, I'm not sure. Once again, this is the other piece of lighting, which is on the actual fixture, so for product placement and for, you know, illuminating goods, the lighting is going to be placed on the fixture and not fixed. Historic and, and your eye is meant to go through and not really be distracted from the main show, which is the historic fabric. And that's that.
All right. We have one question, I may have more.
Part of the existing columns, it appears that the columns are painted up to the, sort of the spring point of the arches, are you planning on, is that maybe, are you, I imagine you're doing that?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
On the, on the existing columns, it looks like they're painted up to the spring point of the arch.
Oh, oh.
Are you planning to repaint that, or is that?
No, that's, that's, we're not doing anything with that.
I don't think it's painting.
I think it's terracotta.
Different shade of tile. It's just a different age of tile.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, we'll take testimony, we'll come back to you.
Laura Sakim, Representative of the Upper East Side Historic Listers, Chair Carol and Honorable Commissioners. When the Bridge Market retail space came before demolition in 2017, we highlighted the importance of preserving the remarkable experience created by the vaulted citizens. Friends, pleased to see an improved proposal that not only respects the cathedral-like Guastavino tile vaults, but celebrates them. Friends Preservation Committee commends the applicant for finding a solution for the HVAC system that does not include unsightly visible ductwork that would detract from the space. Additionally, we appreciate the life, the lighting study performed and the proposed light fixtures, as we believe them to be less intrusive than the existing blending well with the terracotta columns. Friends Preservation Committee takes no issue with the removal of the non-historic mezzanine on the north portion of the Bridge Market. While we would prefer to see no large obstruction of the space, we understand the need for ancillary structures. We believe that the proposed location and material pallets for the product, storage, and employees' area are appropriate. However, we believe it to be oversized and would like to see a design that is less intrusive, both visually and physically. Nonetheless, we are pleased to see that the proposed work, unlike the previously approved plan, would not damage the remarkable cathedral tiles. Finally, Friends Preservation Committee appreciates the subdued signage, where we lament the lack of symmetry of the proposed infill on the north facade. However, we do not believe that the new doors would detract from the overall appearance of the Landmark building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? And we do have ten letters in support of the application, which we'll enter into the record. Is there anything you'd like to say before we close the hearing, response to the comments?
I have to say something, but I think we did get a proclamoring of support at the mayor from the neighborhood level, not only because of the brand itself, but because just activating the space in general is a real public safety issue, so there is said about the way we treated the, the lighting and just be able to have more lighting on the street and eyes on the street, and this will be a very busy location, and so folks are very excited and supportive of that. Thank you.
Okay, that's an emotion to close the hearing.
Second.
Paul Baker. So, we're pretty familiar with these. So we're pretty familiar with these bays, we've just deployed, I think, I've seen the eye bolts. And previously, the commission approved Food Emporium, which is actually what we approved that mezzanine for East Glass. And we've also, we also approved a mezzanine in Guastavinos in the 90s as well, so we've seen a lot of these spaces get reused. It's a great opportunity to get a couple of people to see that. In this case, the sort of substitution, the mezzanine comes off the video wall and is pushed to the back, it's the solid wall. Any thoughts about the details once that comes on?
Sure. Yes. Wow. There's some ideas in here that, you know, we wonder why others haven't come up with on the Michael West of the HVAC, and it's just a tremendous solution. And really, that was, that and the mezzanine, the two things that probably detracted most in the last, last iteration. And I think this is fantastic. And by the way, I do have to thank the applicant. I think, well, a question I was going to ask is whether you actually run seminars with other architects and teachers, an efficient, easy patient that actually hits the highlights and gets in and gets out. So, thank you. But I, I don't have a problem with anything, even the way that the loading pass is done. I think it's terrific.
Yeah, for integrating, yeah.
I was just going to say, yeah, I concur. I think it's a very sensitive approach and lighting, the way it's handled, it's terrific. And clearing the spaces, getting the open, seeing, really see the colors is, is a really great adaptation for the interior and hoping that, you know, that back in line and...
Great. Yes. That's great. Okay, so back to your turn.
The matter of, 405 to 415 East, East 59th Street, Queensborough, individual landmark. This is an application to replace infill at our openings, install signage and alter the vaulted space or the bridge. I note that the large expanse below the Queensborough Bridge between First and North Avenues is notable for the Guastavino tile vaulting. And that this space originally accommodated an unenclosed Blue Market and was enclosed by steel and glass curtain walls prior to the 1920s, which were replaced, sort of in 1988, with new steel and glass curtain walls, doors and entrances. I recommend approval, noting that the removal of the mezzanine at the north side of the space below the bridge roadway and the tall partition at the north entry will eliminate non-historic features that bisect, restore two-story volumes, volume of the space, thereby enhancing the public's ability to experience the two-story volume of this space as monumental and stored. That the installations will facilitate the adaptive reuse of the space, will be set apart from terracotta columns and ceiling, and will not cause damage to the significant architectural features within the space. That the bulk of the proposed installations will be within the lower rear portion of the vaulted space, will not appreciably obscure the visibility or significant features such as the Guastavino walls and terracotta columns and are reversible. That the elevator stairs and mechanical equipment and related enclosures at the upper portions of the space will be grouped together at the northeast corner will comprise the smallest volumes needed for their functionality and will connect to existing exterior louvers. That the proposed new interior uplights will be small in size, simply designed and finished in a color to approximate closely the color of the underlying terracotta and Guastavino tiles. And the new armatures will be attached to existing penetrations at the columns and reuse, and reuse existing concrete. That the proposed installation of the new western bay entry doors at the north and south curtain walls will not eliminate or damage significant architectural features and will maintain the existing pattern of vertical volumes within these bays. That the installation of the two-fold loading bay doors at the replacement curtain wall infill at the 60th Street facade will not eliminate significant historic fabric, will blend harmoniously with the surrounding infill in terms of materials, configuration, and finish, and will be keeping the historic presence of openings at the base, bases of the arched openings below the roadway, as well as the historic hopper operation of windows within the arches. That the proposed exterior signs will be located in close proximity to entrances, will be well scaled to the arched openings and attached only to the wall, to the curtain wall infill framing. That the proposed alterations to the roadway and planting areas at the north side of the bridge and the installation of a shopping cart corral near the south entrance are minor changes that will allow for truck deliveries and customer convenience, and will be in keeping with the history of changing patterns of circulation that's beside the bridge. And the cumulative effect of the work will be to maintain the special architectural and historic character of the Queensborough Bridge individual landmark.
All in paper. Any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Goodbye.